All right, folks, we're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. Fantastic turnout tonight, as one knows, it's great to see everyone. Wow, today is a great day in San Bernardino, and definitely a great day for our school district. So, we are gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you for all those of you that came out today, for our newest board member, Felicia Alexander. Great to have you here this evening. Yes, absolutely. We're gonna make it official here in a little bit, in a little bit. We're gonna go ahead and start with our pledge of allegiance, which is 2.2, and I'm gonna ask Pastor Dr. Michael Anderson Owens to lead us in the pledge, please.
That's Andrew.
And- Andrew.
Yeah, that's my pastor.
Michael A. Pastor, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
The high states of America- And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. I'll say this much, starting out our meeting with a pastor, that's a good way to start out a meeting, so. Great job, sir. All right, we'll move on to 2.3, approval of the agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion or items to be pulled?
Mr. Wyatt.
Vice President Tillman.
Yes, I know we have three positions on here that are reclassification positions, and we could go with them tonight, but I just know we have a new superintendent, so I thought maybe it's something we might wanna table, and have him take a look at. It's something for consideration.
Okay, that's a discussion item, so it would be consensus of the board?
I would support that, as well.
All right, so I'm looking for consensus from the board. That is two, I'll start to my left, Ms. Chusky. There's, Ms. Tillman, if you need to-
There are items, 11.4, 11.5, and 11.6, the reclassifications. So I'm just, we have a new superintendent coming, just make sure this is the direction he wants to go.
I understand, thank you.
Do you agree?
Ms. Lyles.
Okay.
All righty, Ms. Aviles Grande, are you in agreement with that?
Yes, ma'am.
And I believe, Ms. Rosas Medina, you are as well?
I am as well.
Thank you. And then one other item, I would like, after we do the swearing-in of our newest board member, Mrs. Felicia Alexander, to go to closed session, to take up the item for superintendent. So we'll go 2.4, and then go to, after we do the five-minute break, go into closed session, vote on the one item for superintendent, and then come back out, if I have the board consensus. And that being, because we're gonna have awards and other items, it'd be good if the superintendent is here, that they can participate.
Good with that. I love that idea, but, let me put my light on. But I do also wanna, you know, respect Dr. Funches, because, I mean, I guess it would be exchanged anyways, but-
Say that again, sorry.
I would wanna respect you, since you're in that right now, you're okay with that?
So, with board consensus, I'm pretty sure that we can make that decision, and I'd be okay with that. I see some, looks like, I call it bewilderment, so, Ms. Chusky.
Well, I would assume that Dr. Funches would stay there, and they would just join us up here, and for that, and Dr. Funches would lead the meeting, since he's agenda-prepared. That was kind of what I was thinking, was that the new superintendent would join us, but Dr. Funches would still-
Everything that would've happened after we went into closed session before, will happen the same way. The only difference being that the new superintendent will be able to give out the awards.
Okay, I'm good with that. Yeah, and that's what I wanted to clarify, I'm glad you clarified, is that I wanted to respect him, because he's already helped with the agenda and everything else, and has his nose-
That was gonna happen the same way, anyway.
Well, I don't know if the new superintendent would be sticking around, either, to be honest with you. I know we're announcing him, but today would not be the official start date, as well. So I wanna make sure I clarify that, so everybody is under the understanding that the individual would not be starting officially until a later date. And there will be a readout, as well, on all of that information, that we're getting a little bit off-
Well, then, if that's the case, no, I thought he was starting today, so if you-
That's not correct.
Then we, no need to change. My mistake.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tillman. Well, that was another piece, I was, actually, while you were doing that, I was texting to see if the individual's even here yet. And so, no, 'cause I think we tried to keep it timely, on schedule, so when the announcement is here, the individual's here with his family, so.
No change.
All right, then no change, however, we did pull 11.4, 11.5, 11.6. All right, any other discussion or items to be pulled? All right, and I do apologize, I see a lot of lights on, so we got a little bit off of the light system there, and how's that working? And thank you to our maintenance folks, you don't see it up here, but our maintenance folks did a wonderful job of setting up our light panel here with all the correct names, so thank you to them, as well. All right, folks, let's go ahead and vote on the agenda as amended, thank you.
I need a motion and a second.
It moved in second.
I second, and Mr. Tillman moved.
All righty, motion carries, agenda will be accepted as amended. We'll move on to 2.4, administration of oath of office for incoming board member. Prior to entering upon the duties of their office, all Board of Education members shall take the oath of affirmation required by law. The oath affirmation will be administered to Felicia Alexander, who will take the seat vacated by Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers. As a provisional appointee, Ms. Alexander will serve on the board until the general election in November 2024. All right, at this time, we will go ahead and call Ms. Alexander up for the oath of office. And I believe the oath of office will be administered by Councilman Alexander. So welcome, Councilman. Oh, and I need to announce that we have county school board member Dr. Doughty Rogers in the house, as well. I think she's a familiar face. And I just have to add that I did have to present to her, for the first time ever, yesterday, so it was a pleasure to do so. Thank you, Dr. Rogers.
Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name-
I, Felicia Alexander.
solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States-
I solemnly swear I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States-
and the Constitution of the State of California-
and the Constitution of the State of California-
against all enemies, foreign or domestic-
against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
that I will bear true faith and allegiance-
I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance-
to the Constitution of the United States-
to the Constitution of the United States-
and the Constitution of the State of California-
and the Constitution to the State of California-
that I take this obligation freely-
that I take this obligation freely-
without any mental reservation-
without any mental reservation-
or purpose of evasion-
or purpose of evasion-
that I will-
that I will-
faithfully discharge the duties-
that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
upon-
upon-
which I am about to enter-
which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Board Member Alexander. At this time, we're gonna take five minutes for pictures, and then after that, we will invite Board Member Alexander to join the rest of us and continue our meeting. So it'll take a five-minute recess, thank you. All right, folks, thank you for being here today, and this evening, and celebrating with all of us, and welcoming and honoring Felicia Alexander, as she comes up and joins us, and I always hate this word, it's dais or deis, it can be pronounced both ways, just so you know, but deis, so. Come on up. And I think as she sits, officially, we could all give her a round of applause. All right, Ms. Alexander, and Ms. Rosas Medina will help you with our very sophisticated light system over here, you know. We got some real fast board members that like to get that light on, so you're gonna have to get used to that. All right, we're gonna move on to 3.0, 3.1, outstanding achievement awards. The Board of Education is honored to recognize the students, parents, grandparents, guardians, volunteers, and employees from Bradley and Parkside Elementary Schools, Richardson Prep Middle School, and Pacific High School. Students will be recognized for their hard work towards academic achievement, parents, grandparents, guardians, and volunteers for their school involvement, and positive impact on the lives of children and site employees, both certificated and classified, for their dedication and commitment to their schools and students they teach and support. Now, and now in that- Board, it has been your expectation that we honor all partners that take interest in and support the academic achievement of our scholars. So right before Maria Garcia and our excellent communication team comes forth, I'd like to thank Ms. Christina Tesmer of Bradley Elementary, the principal, Ms. Kalila Lewis, Kalila Lewis of Parkside Elementary, as well, Ms. Jenny Vatier of Richardson Prep, as well, and Dr. Natalie Raimundo of Pacific High School. Thank those leaders and their staff, job well done, thank you.
Good evening, now it's time to present the outstanding achievement awards. My name is Maria Garcia, and I'm the district's communications officer. This evening, the Board of Education will honor students, parents, and staff from Bradley Elementary School, Parkside Elementary School, Richardson Prep High Middle School, and Pacific High School. The Board recognizes outstanding students to build self-esteem and honor excellence in academics, athletics, fine arts, citizenship, and most improvement. The Board also recognizes outstanding parents, volunteers, and employees. All of our outstanding award winners deserve the honor of being recognized here at our board meeting. I ask that our esteemed Board of Education members and our administrator in charge, Dr. Marcus Funches, please make their way to the front to congratulate our honorees tonight. All of our school-level honorees will receive a certificate of appreciation and certificates from County Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. Our outstanding student award winners will also receive free tickets to the San Bernardino Symphony, as well as a district bumper sticker and a yard sign. Honorees, when your name is called, would you and your family please come forward to accept your awards and have a photo taken with our Board of Education members, Dr. Funches, our cabinet members, and your principal? Students, please be sure to pick up your yard sign before you leave. Would Bradley Elementary School Principal Christina Tesmer please join us at the front by walking down the ramp where you see the balloons? We ask that our honorees walk down the ramp where the balloons are located when your name is called. After the pictures, our honorees will exit using the opposite side, where I am. So let's start with a round of applause for third grader Athena Bejoso. Athena is a student in Beth Winogar's class. Athena tries her best at everything that she does. She accepts that to learn, we must first make mistakes. She doesn't get discouraged when she has to try again. She has grown as both a reader and a writer this school year. Athena loves writing and hopes to become a great writer one day, and attend UCLA. I'm sure that Athena's parents, Iris Bejoso and Antonio Ramirez, are so proud of her. Let's give her a round of applause. Yes, we invite the parents, Iris Bejoso and Antonio Ramirez, to please join us. Our next student is Benjamin Barajas, a sixth grader in Francis Casanera's class. Benjamin is responsible and respectful 100% of the time. He is the lead student when he's exploring his school community. He has a great work ethic. He is well-liked by so many on campus, and assists his friends, both in and out of the classroom. Benjamin wants to become a teacher. Thank you to Benjamin's mother, Lorena Barajas, for raising such an amazing young man. Congratulations. And we also invite Lorena Barajas to come forward. Yes, this is a big family event, so please join us. Let's hear it one more time for Benjamin Barajas. And next up is our outstanding parent award winner, Consuelo Rubio. Consuelo is a member of the school-site council and English learner advisory committee, and our representative to the district-level committee. She volunteers to assist in yard supervision when our rec aids are out. She is an English learner parent, and is currently attending classes to empower herself with the English language. She is interested in attending the California Association for Bilingual Education Conference this summer. Consuelo is a role model parent, thank you for your work. And now, Secretary Vivian Hernandez is an outstanding classified employee. Vivian represents Bradley in style, dressing up every day as an example of the professional expectations that she has for herself and others. On chaotic days, Vivian manages to maintain her cool. She directs others and manages to keep the school under control. Her customer service to Bradley students, families, and staff is above the rest. Congratulations, Vivian. Yes, please don't be shy, come on down and be in the picture. Our one big happy family. Congratulations to Vivian. And now, with bilingual program facilitator, Dr. Dewitt Ortonio Devari, is our outstanding certificated employee. He works many hours, oh, I'm sorry, she works many hours past her daily schedule to assure that all tasks are complete. That includes organizing school meetings and many events, creating assessments, and keeping everyone informed about all that is happening at Bradley Elementary. Dewitt has the goal of making Bradley Elementary one of the best schools in the entire school district. Thank you for honoring all of our Bradley students, parents, and employees. Don't be shy, come and get in the picture. Let's put our hands together one more time for Dr. Ortonio Devari. And thank you for helping us honor our Bradley Elementary Bears. Now, let's give a big Panther welcome to Parkside Elementary School and Principal Kalila Lewis Wilkins. Now, please join me in recognizing Winter Ramos, a first grader in Katherine Guy's class. Winter is an all-around great student and human being. If someone is hurt or sad, Winter is the first to reach out and try to help. She wants to see her friends happy and healthy. Winter is also a role model. She puts everything she has into every lesson and every project. When given criticism, she doesn't complain and truly tries to improve. Winter's aunt, Darling Ramos, and grandmother, Marina Ramos, have raised an amazing little girl. Let's give her a round of applause. Let's hear it one more time for Winter Ramos. Congratulations. Our next honoree is Manuel Manny Gomez, a sixth grader in Connie Phillips' class. Manny has been at a Parkside Panther since he started kindergarten. He is proud of his school and community, and it shows. Manny also has a love for learning that he shares with younger students and his classmates. He works hard each day to show positive growth in academics, making him a wonderful role model for other students. I'm sure that Manny's parents, Lorenzo Gomez and Linda T. Bryant, are very proud of him. Let's hear it one more time for Manny Gomez. Good job, Manny. Our outstanding parent award winner, Kaitlin Maya, cannot join us, but we're gonna go ahead and brag about her, and a teacher is going to receive her award. Kaitlin Maya is a loving mother to Lilia and Olivia, and she has been very involved in the educational journey of each of her daughters. Kaitlin has volunteered at the school to assist in many ways, and she also serves on Parkside Schoolside Council. Everyone at Parkside appreciates Kaitlin's dedication to the school and to her children. Thank you, Kaitlin. Moving on, night custodian, Maddie Rogers, is an outstanding classified employee. Maddie has gone out of her way to make sure that staff have everything that they need to be prepared to instruct students. Maddie is unbelievably patient, kind, and down-to-earth. She is ready to help in any type of weather, and no need is too great. Staff love working with Maddie because of the joy and pride that she shows in the work that she does every day at Parkside Elementary. Congratulations, Maddie. Congratulations, Maddie Rogers. And now, sixth grade teacher Constance Phillips is our outstanding certified employee. Constance has supported all of our students from TK to sixth grade, and she has pushed them to work to their full potential. She is always open to colleagues, and she is always open to including colleagues and their classes in joining her students for any collaboration opportunities. In staff meetings, Constance is transparent about her opinions and ultimately wants what is best for our school and students. She loves Parkside and those who are part of it. Let's give her a round of applause. Congratulations to everyone at Parkside. Now, I want to invite Jenny Veteer, principal of Richardson Prep High Middle School. Congratulations to eighth grader Skylar Allen. Skylar is a model student. She is on the honor roll, completes all her assignments, and work diligently to turn in high-quality work. As the school's ASB president, Skylar helps to create a positive and fun school climate and culture. Skylar would love to attend UC Riverside or UC Santa Barbara and become an elementary school teacher. Skylar enjoys working with younger kids and helping them develop their mind, heart, and skills. I'm sure that her parents, Mike and Kristen Allen, are very proud of her. Up next is eighth grader Albert Becerril. Albert is a high honor student at Richardson, and he works very hard to show his skill mastery in all of his classes. He plays the French horn in advanced band and participates in all of our spirit days, lunchtime activities, and many of our after-school programs. Albert's career goal is to be a software developer because he loves working with technology. I also want to recognize Albert's parents Alberto and Blanca Becerril for raising an outstanding young man. Congratulations, Albert. Way to go, Albert. And now, Imelda Trujano is an outstanding parent award winner. Imelda consistently attends Richardson's English Learner Advisory Committee meetings, and she adds valuable input and suggestions to help all of our students grow and succeed. She offers advice to other parents when they have questions, and she brings a positive presence and helpful attitude every time she is on campus. Congratulations, Imelda, and thank you for being an outstanding parent. Congratulations, Imelda. Bilingual office technician registrar Monica Morales is an... Monica Morales is our outstanding classified employee. She greets everyone who walks through Richardson's door with a warm smile. She makes the effort to know students' names, and she forms positive relationships with them as she offers her guidance and support. Dress for success each and every day, Monica brings class and professionalism to Richardson. Congratulations, Monica. Way to go, Monica. Kelsey Miller is an outstanding... Kelsey Miller is an outstanding certified employee and math teacher. Kelsey is a demonstration teacher. She maintains a standard of excellence not only for herself but for her students as well. Kelsey provides engaging and rigorous instruction to all of her students. While supporting all learners in their growth and progress, Kelsey's students are lucky to have her, and Richardson is incredibly grateful for her hard work and dedication to help her colleagues and to help our students grow. Congratulations to Kelsey Miller. Let's give all of our Richardson Tigers a big round of applause. And now, it's time to welcome our Pacific High School Pirates. I see that doctor, that principal, Dr. Natalie Raimondo, is making her way forward. So, congratulations to senior Guadalupe Dolan, who was nominated by teacher CJ Eastwood. She was also nominated by head counselor Greg Haynes. Guadalupe is an excellent example of what it means to be a Pacific Pirate. She is a student athlete with a 4.4 GPA while taking rigorous AP classes, Avid, and dual-enrollment college courses. Guadalupe has already successfully passed six college courses and has completed the Adobe Design Pathway. Guadalupe hopes to attend UC Santa Barbara next year. Her parents, Thomas and Cecilia Dolan, must be so proud of her. Congratulations. Our final outstanding student is senior Na Lou Kilo or Kilo Otuafi. Kilo was nominated by teacher CJ Eastwood and athletic director Carmel Brand. Kilo is a force to behold on the field and in class. She earned a 4.3 GPA while taking Pacific's most rigorous courses and a college course. In her four years as an athlete, Kilo earned All-League in varsity football, volleyball, softball, and soccer. Kilo is truly an outstanding student. Let's also honor Kilo's parents, David and Anya Otuafi, for helping her become the great leader and role model that she is. Congratulations, Kilo. And up next, we have outstanding parent Maria Garcia. Maria is thoroughly, is a thoroughly dedicated Pirate parent and has been since her daughter Ashley entered Pacific four years ago. Maria not only serves and has served on the schoolside council and the English Learner Advisory Committee, she also represents Pacific on district committees. Maria has served on the superintendent's parent advisory committee and is dedicated to helping other parents make connections with their schools. Thank you, Maria, for helping make Pacific a better place for all students and families. Congratulations, Marianne. Thank you for volunteering. We're very pleased to honor secretary one Lonnie Gómez. Lonnie understands how her work, how the work of our support staff contributes to Pacific success, and she focuses on results. If she sees that something is not done, she either takes care of it or brings it to the attention, brings it to our attention so that we can address it, usually along with an idea or a solution. Lonnie does what it takes to get people the tools that they need to get their job done, and she is always on the lookout for how she can help. She is especially talented in designing the occasional poster, and her style and flair have helped us on many projects. Thank you, Lonnie. Congratulations. CalSafe teacher and Atlas liaison Karen Guy is our final outstanding employee. Karen takes complete ownership of her work, and she is focused on providing the best services she can so that students can graduate even when they have lost hope or have lost all motivation. Students and parents never doubt that Karen cares about them and their success. She goes out of her way to visit homes, deliver Thanksgiving baskets, and attend games. She is a key partner in our Pirate Support Team, and she is a key part of ensuring that every senior graduates. Congratulations, Karen Guy. And those are the Outstanding Achievement Award winners for Pacific High School. Go Pirates! Audience, let's give a big thank you to all of our honorees for making hope happen. Thank you to the Board of Education, and you may now retake your seats. And a special thank you to Fifth District San Bernardino County Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. and the San Bernardino Symphony Orchestra for their support of this evening's honorees. Audience, please give a warm applause to all of our honorees one more time. And this concludes this evening's, this evening's outstanding award presentations. Thank you.
All right, folks, and congratulations again to our students, staff, and family members and community members. members, and community members. Job well done. All righty, folks, we'll go ahead and move on to 3.2, Resolution and Recognition of President's Day, and that will be read by our board member, Ms. Chahusky. Thank you, Mickey.
Thank you. Whereas in 1885, February 22nd, Washington's birthday became a nationally recognized federal holiday honoring our first President of the United States. And whereas, under the Uniform Monday Holiday Act passed in 1968, Washington's birthday was officially moved to the third Monday in February. And whereas, although Washington's birthday is a federal holiday, each state is free to call it what they choose. And whereas, President's Day is popularly seen as a day to recognize the lives and achievements of all America's chief executives, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District does join California and the nation in celebrating February 20th, 2023 as President's Day, and encourages district teachers to include George Washington and other presidents' contributions as part of the history of our nation.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All right, thank you very much. No discussion. We will have to do a verbal approval on this because Ms. Cunningham did notify me that our voting machine's not working, so I'll start with Ms. Chahusky.
Hi.
Ms. Savios?
Hi.
Myself, aye. Ms. Aviles Grande?
Aye.
Ms. Rosas Medina?
Aye.
All right. All right, thank you, Ms. Felicia. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 4.0, Public Comments. And let me get to that real quick. 4.1, Receive Public Comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and with their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. At this time, we are all, we are still accepting comments via Zoom, and a registration form is recorded and available for 24 hours prior to all scheduled Board of Education meetings and close at 4:30 PM on the day of the meeting. In-person public comments will be taken first. Participants speaking via Zoom are reminded that any appropriate language or images will forfeit their registration, and they will immediately be removed from the meeting. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be invited no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. We will start with our first public comment, and we will call up Ms. Christina Marquez, one of our teachers. Welcome. And while she's walking up here, I will acknowledge, I see a lot of our teachers out there in red tonight, so welcome, teachers. Good to see you all.
Good evening, Dr. Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, board members, cabinet. My name is Christina M. Marquez. Most of you are familiar with me. I'm here at just about every board meeting. But today, I'm here as a teacher, but I'm also a community member. Not sure if everybody's aware of the fact that I do, in fact, live in the city of San Bernardino, and I teach at one of the smallest schools in this district, Fairfax Elementary. Recently, January 30th, the fifth graders at Fairfax Elementary had the opportunity to go to science camp at Poly Institute. And I want to thank a lot of people. When they talk about it takes a village, it really did take a village to get my students up there and to get them ready for 16-degree weather with snow falling and a bus driver, female bus driver, who got out there and put the chains on the bus to get us up there. Right now, I'd like to thank a number of people who helped get the students prepared with snow pants, gloves, hats, beanies, thermal underwear, all kinds of things to get them going, small backpacks. Frank Washington III from the Northwest Project Area Committee. Sharon Sundrew Dean from the San Bernardino Teachers Association Office Staff. My friends Rafael Trujillo from Rialto City Council. My friend from Redlands, Barbara Keough, attorney. Retired educators from our district, Elizabeth Cruz, who was awesome, who actually went above and beyond to get snow pants, thermals, gloves, hats. Retired educator Elena Marsh, who taught at Fairfax Elementary School. She used her connections with Santa Claus Inc. to get us those winter jackets because hoodies just weren't going to do it on this trip. A big thank you to my fellow Fairfax educators, Valeni Bravati, Patricia Jackson, Jamie Kellum, Chris Wilson. And finally, some of the others I'd like to thank is for their guidance and assistance in making this adventure happen. Anna Applegate, Dr. Rodriguez, and Dr. Scott Wyatt. Finally, I would like to thank, big, big thank you to Dr. Alexander for his support in this endeavor, and also for going out and buying snow boots for the kids as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I think we have one more person, and that is you, Ms. Marquez. So thank you to you as well. Looks like Vice President Tillman has a question or comment for it.
Yes, sir. Ms. Marquez, you said you went to Poly Tech, so where is that exactly at?
It's in Running Springs, California, at 6,200 feet.
And they had nice snow there.
They had a lot of snow. The snow was falling as we were driving up. It snowed on Monday. It stopped for a couple hours and continued snowing until Tuesday.
How long were you all there?
We were there from Monday until the afternoon on Wednesday, and then we came down.
That is wonderful. A wonderful experience for our kids.
Oh, they loved it.
Thank you all very much for putting in the hard work. Thank you.
And they're willing to go back up again, but I told them only fifth graders.
Yes, and Ms. Marquez, thank you to you again, and also our bus driver for keeping our kids safe and those conditions. And I know we had a little conversation about it, and if you could share with us, how many of our students was that the first time they've ever been in the snow?
All but one. We had one who had seen snow before, but every chance they had between breaks, between classes, because they were up there learning about science, they were out in the snow. Prior to us going up, we read about how snow comes together, how it's formed in the atmosphere, and then we read a story out of our anthology called Survival at Forty Below. You're welcome.
What a wonderful experience for our children. That's amazing, all of them but one, right? And I think sometimes we take things for granted, so thank you to all of our staff for making that happen and all the community partners as well. Our next public speaker is Davana Robertson. Come on up.
All right. Excuse my voice. Been doing a lot of talking today. Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
My name is Davana Robertson. I wear several hats in the community, but today I am here on behalf of Cope. So in 2019, a community partner brought to our attention that the CSU system was proposing, my eyes ain't that well, proposing a change to their application process, a fourth year of math or a quantitative reasoning course. That in itself was not a bad thing, right, for our children to get an extra math. Community partners like Blue at Trust West, inner-city struggle campaign for college success alongside Cope organized to protect the CSU admissions process and stop the QR proposal. Some of the red flags that we had were the drop in enrollment from 41% to 34% for Black and Latino students. So Black students would be declining in eligibility from 31% to 24%, and Latinx from 32% to 26%. K-12, another red flag was the K-12 system not being prepared to provide the additional math. And so again, we didn't think it was a bad thing that they wanted our students to come to the CSU system better prepared, but you cannot punish the K-12 system for not being prepared with the educators that you possibly are sending to the K-12 system, right? And we knew the harm it was going to do to African-American students in the state of California, as well as Latino students and students who are in more rural communities. So Cope, along with our other partners, were not just advocating for our students here in the city of San Bernardino, we were advocating for students all throughout the state of California that people were not thinking about. And CSU is supposed to be what? The people's, the people's college, right? So we advocated, we advocated for the CSU trustee board to do some research to make sure that this was not creating a harmful exclusionary practice that was going to impact Black and Brown students more than anybody else. We reminded the CSU Board of Trustees, the CSU system is a, or the CSU system is a people's university. So I am here to share with you all that on January 25th of 2023, the CSU Board of Trustees made the decision to lay that to rest. So we just wanted to come and celebrate with you all that that was a huge win. And although at the time, in 2019, three years ago, San Bernardino School District made the decision to remain neutral, but in your decision to remain neutral, you supported us community members. You guys provided a bus and made sure that we filled that bus up, and we headed to Long Beach trustee board meeting. And when I say we came strong and mighty from the IE, we came strong and mighty from the IE, so much so that they had installed metal detectors. Like they, I'm just telling y'all, the audience, they wasn't ready because this was very, very close to being approved, and they had no feedback from community. They didn't take into any consideration who would be hit the hardest with this. So they also were caught off guard when we showed up with a busload from the IE supported by the SBCUSD system. And although you all, and we went with two directors who are still here in the district, and they reminded us several times, we're neutral, we're neutral, but even in you all's position to remain neutral, you supported community because you knew it was important to us. And so although there's some new board members, there's also some seasoned board members, and I just want to remind you all that we have come to you several times before and will continue to come as partners. And so we talked to you all about the school-to-prison pipeline. We talked to you about the fail in pass rate for algebra. We advocated for citations to be eliminated or reduced, right? And so we also wanted to make sure we came and shared with you all that we appreciate the support that was provided. And I don't know if you guys, the board members who are here that were here then, I don't know if you guys remember, I know Abigail is smiling and nodding her head, but that was a big deal. That was a big, big deal. And so the partnership that you take on with community members when you listen to what our concerns are is very, very important. We had students from SBCUSD speak at the Board of Trustees meeting who graduated from San Bernardino School District. So just wanted to say that and wanted to share that very, very, very good news, and also just want to say for you new board members, we look forward to getting to know you and spending some time with you, and for you seasoned board members, we also look forward to thank you, reconnecting with you as well. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson, and I see Ms. Rosas Medina has her light on.
No, definitely, I want to say thank you for bringing the update because I was watching, watching online and just seeing the amount of families there as well, just speaking up and of course with Cope. So I just want to say thank you for bringing the update because I didn't know what would have happened after the fact, so thank you.
Yes, we won. And it was three years in the making, but we got it. So that's a huge win. Thank you.
And Ms. Robertson, I just want to say thank you as well. You know, you're not just a partner with us in our education of our students, our children, but also our community. We know you are everywhere and wear many hats, so I want to say thank you. And you know, I see some of our local council members here as well, and you know, the big word and the theme for us is unity. And I believe that we have that unity, and we're moving forward in this city, and it takes the efforts of everyone to make that happen, so thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Yes, I want to thank you also, and you're right. I think it's great that we have organizations within our district that check us and let us know when there's an issue and a problem and don't let go of it. And as you say, we've worked together in partnership for a long time, and I'm sure that this new board seated is going to continue to do the same thing. Because in the end, what you did and the others did is actually saving lives and transforming lives. It makes a big difference.
It does.
A lot of times, people get tone deaf and are disconnected, and really, they have no way of understanding the life of disenfranchised people. When you go to our graduations and ask the students who are first-time high school graduates to raise their hand, it's amazing. And when you, when you go to CalState San Bernardino and ask the students there at CalState San Bernardino, if they are first-time college students, to see them raise their hands is amazing. But without your work, there would have been fewer hands there at CalState San Bernardino.
Without our work.
Without our work, you're right.
Without our work.
Exactly. So thank you very much for your work, and we'll continue to work together. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Chahusky.
Hello, thank you again. I'm not going to repeat everything everyone said, but I think Ms. Marquez said it takes a village, and I appreciate the work that Cope does and advocating for our kids, and particularly in the school, breaking the school-to-prison pipeline, which is something that, as you, I think, know, is near and dear to my heart, is getting kids routed off to school to career, school to success.
Yes.
So I appreciate you coming tonight and letting, you know, letting us know what you did, especially those of us that are new on the board, and we look forward to continue.
What we did.
Yes, what we did.
What we did.
And what we will continue to do, which is advocate for our kids, particularly those who are the most disenfranchised by the system. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All righty, thank you again.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right, our next public comment speaker is Ms. Negretti.
Good evening, oh, good evening, board. I believe that we could all agree that safety of students will be the number one for parents in the district. And because of such, I would like to receive an update regarding the fence by the Arroyo Valley High School front office and a better fence for the pool. I would also like to ask for a commitment from the board to pay for all of the senior high school sitting fees from this year forward, as well as providing funds to buy new practice uniforms and warm-up suits. You made a commitment for the cheerleading teams, please make a commitment for the soccer You know, this district continues to have many needs, but those needs are at the school sites, not here, which is why I strongly believe you should oppose Agenda Items 6.3, 11.4, 11.5, and 11.6. 6.3 is for the stipend for four assistant superintendents, but if I recall correctly, you've had three ongoing superintendents. Do any of you have a clear idea of what the superintendent's duties have performed or AICs have performed to date? There is nothing in the agenda to show their qualifications and duties for the roles of AICs. There is also no disclosure of the stipend amount nor timeframe. Certificated and classified, when are they are given stipends for the duties that they perform, they always have, so many students from this date to that date. Without transparency of what decisions are being paid, paid by with public funds, it gives the appearance that fraud may be taking place. No one in their right mind would hire someone for a task and say, go ahead, do the job, and let me know how much it is at the end of the job. And of course, now I see who is the fourth one. I had no idea, nor know, do we, I know when he starts, so is this the person that they're trying to add for the fourth stipend? Agenda Items 11.4, 11.5, and 11.6. There is information that looks like it was specifically created to promote and increase the pay of three individuals without disclosing the impact on public funds. May I remind you of the incompetence of Eric Beter, and you can also add the assistant superintendent that was overseeing the COVID process. Last year alone, the season disis letter that I sent to you saved the board and the school district hundreds of thousands of dollars that would have been incurred in lawsuits because parents would have been able to file a claim per child. Your assistant superintendents, who are supposed to read and approve the information and letters sent out to parents because that was... because that was, that was a document pertaining to COVID procedures and testing, that would mean that Eric Betier should have known, has the employee overseen COVID and the district assuming consent would cause lawsuits. Before this, I have already shared how he was given the position because he did not meet the qualifications when he was given the promotion. He may be more knowledgeable now, but there is, there are new job descriptions that look like they were drafted to fit him and the other individuals for the positions of multimedia manager and communications manager. With enrolling continuing to decline and student safety concerns continue on the rise, the public funds could be put to better use. You can abolish the deputy, deputy superintendent position that Del Marston created and not approve the stipends nor the new management positions, but put those funds to better use. Such as putting them at elementary schools. Years ago, we came, I came, and I asked you to put at least one security officer at the elementary levels because they are a deterrent for the crime. May I remind you of North Park? Could that have not been avoided? And reading the documents from the attorney, it looks like it could have. Not only could you use the stipends that are, you are about to or considering, that I hope that you don't consider for increasing that. I remember Danny Tillman, you were the first board member who brought up the cost, the continuous cost. Well, when you promote these people, the, of the creative positions, that is a continuing cost until they either leave or retire. So, why not put students first and go ahead and put that cost to put security at every school elementary? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Negretti. And I do have, um, just a couple of questions for clarification, please. You, um, there we go. Let me get rid of that. Mr. Tillman's supposed to be doing that, but no, just kidding. Um, you had three items and I know one was the Royal Valley fencing. And then you said uniforms for soccer team. Which soccer team?
I, I would love for you to do it everywhere. Because when I came to you a few board meetings ago and I said, hey, you know what? Students are incurring the sitting fee for their senior picture. I, I wasn't asking specifically for just my child's high school. I never come to you asking for something specifically for just the high school that my kid attends or the elementary or the middle school. It's always something district-wide. I'm not one of those parents that wants you to fix my problem for my kid. I want you to fix it district-wide. The funding is there. When you promote, when you create positions, it's funding that should be going directly where? To the schools. You're here for the kids, not for organizations, not your friends, the kids.
And thank you for that. And in my, um, my next question, I didn't hear that one. That's the one I needed to know. When you said soccer team, did you mean any particular?
All soccer teams, district-wide, by all means, you know? Because you've, um, when cheerleading came to you, they said, hey, we're, we're having to fundraise, we're having to fundraise. Our kids are fundraising. This senior class, their dance that they just had was very poorly attended. And my kid was going like, hey, are you going to go in there saying, it's too expensive? It's too expensive. And you, you live here, you know, across the United States, the gas bills tripled. And so, it's sad to think that a lot of our seniors who have worked so hard can't attend their senior dances. They're not, you know, they're avoiding things because of this. But yet, when assistant superintendents need somebody to help them out and train them, but you guys have said they're the best, they're the most qualified, then why do you make that contract of hundreds of thousands of dollars for them? But yet, for our kids, it's nickel and diming.
Thank you for that clarification. And I, I do want to be clear that this board, I know when I first came on this board, we allocated money for uniforms for all sports from middle school to high school, male and female, including, um, cheerleading now, and then also our VAPA programs, which would be our bands and our music programs. So, no, I am surprised to hear that, but we will definitely follow up on that with you because.
I brought that forward a few months too, when I had shared with you the dirty warm-up, you know, and it was felt, it was just the felt, you know, of those practice uniforms. I get it, it's practice uniforms, but I'm thinking, bring your own from home if that's what they're giving you.
Thank you. And I, you know, you just brought another thing to my mind when we look at our wellness centers and our community school model. You know, one of the things that we want to have at our schools is washers and dryers too, that our students and families can use. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Well, could I share with you again, years ago, didn't I ask, and this is when we had, when Rogers, I said those, the special education building has washers and dryers. Could that have been a better use for our homeless youth?
I just want to, uh, make sure we make it clear that we, the board has given direction to pay for all uniforms for the, um, the students in all sports. So, we'll look into that. But I want to make sure that the public knows that the board has made the commitment to pay for the uniforms for all sports and for the VAPA programs. But thank you though for bringing that to our attention.
And then, Ms. Negretti, um, Dr. Fung, does anyone want to comment on the fencing?
So, board, we, what we'll do is we'll provide you with an update this Friday on both matters related to the soccer uniforms and the fencing. But I did want to say, board, right now, the fencing at Arroyo Valley High School is moving forward. Um, funding is secured and we're performing architect design and DSA approval at this time. We'll give you a comprehensive update this Friday. Okay?
Could I clarify? I didn't ask for the soccer uniforms. It's the soccer practice and the warm-up suits. What? Thank you. Just make sure. Thank you.
Sorry, Ms. Negretti. Ms. Viles got her light in there. I agree. Ms. Viles.
Thank you. Just, just really briefly, briefly, thank you for coming, um, before us and sharing this information with us. Um, if you can just, for, um, note, note sake, um, I would also like for us to look into, um, some of the events that have gone unattended due to, um, students not having the ability to pay for dances or whatever event is being put on by the schools as well, please. Cause that shouldn't, you know, it, students should not, not attend because they're unable to pay.
Thank you, Ms. Viles, for saying that. And I recently had the same discussion with our athletic directors for the district as well for certain sporting events. When they get to the CIF playoffs, our kids have to pay and our families have to pay. And I noticed at one of the championship games, I was like, where's our crowd? You know, not only are our stands are packed and it was like.
They're warming up.
Right, yeah. And then, well, I was hoping that, but it'd only be like half. And so, I noticed board would agree and agree with you that we want our kids and our families at all our events, especially if they want to go.
I hope to see you there tomorrow.
Which one's tomorrow?
Arroyo Valley.
And what's the?
Congratulations to Arroyo Valley Soccer Girls. They made it to CIF.
And where are they playing?
Tomorrow, they will be paying, that game will be at the, um, at the house, well, at the school, you know?
We call it the house. That's fine. All right. And then what time?
6:30. No, sorry, sorry, sorry. 5:30.
All right. Thank you for letting us know. Thank you, Ms. Negretti.
Alrighty. Just taking a few notes there. Thank you very much for your comments this evening, everyone. We do appreciate them. And I will move back now to five, which is, uh, 5.0, closed session. 5.1, closed session, public comments. Let me read that real quick. Uh, this is the time members of the public will be provided an opportunity to directly address the board about any item described under disclosed session. Comments are limited to five minutes or less. Ms. Cunningham, do we have any closed session board comments?
Yes, we do have one. Mrs. Negretti.
Alrighty, Ms. Negretti, come on back up. Thank you.
Thank you. Six, uh, closed session comment was regarding 6.3, which was for the stipend for the assistant superintendents. And that is a concern. There, there is nothing. There's no additional information other than they want a stipend. Nobody does this. Nobody puts the cart before the horse. I believe all of you are homeowners. You would not have somebody to do your tile work and tell the guy, come in, get it done. You tell me what it's going to be like afterwards. It's just not, it's, it hasn't happened. And it doesn't happen for certificated. It doesn't happen for classified. When a teacher has to do additional hours, there is a contract ahead to let them know. The teachers, and yet, if you look at your personnel commission report, I don't know how many of you school board members took a look at that. What do we have there? We have there teachers who are having to take additional students. Yes, they're getting reimbursed for that, but wouldn't the funding for this be better? Because if you really look at the benefit for the assistant superintendents, they get to fluff up their portfolio. So, what was it that made you as a board decide that the assistant superintendents were qualified to be the AIA's? And so, and what did they have to show forward, to bring forward to you? Because you are the ones that say, yes, this is what we're going to give, but it's still public funding. It's still the public funds that pay for this. So, you are really the overseers of these public funds. How is it that you're going to now say, this is what we owe you, when it helped them? Because we already had Kenan Mitchell, who left to another district. Whatever he did here helped his portfolio. So, I will look back and I, I don't know if I'll find it, but if you decide to move forward with this or sit on it, I will look back at the previous school board meeting, school board meetings and check to see, was this actually called a voluntary position? Or was there a pre-agreement that this was going to be some sort of stipulation that it was a new employment? Because when you have classified working out of classification, you give them a certain timeframe before you make them that position. Or else there are so many times that classified has not been able to take a position that they've worked for, for three years, one year, they don't get to take it, right? Right here, we knew this was temporary. You all knew this was temporary for the beginning. So, I saw it has, it was a help for them to learn, grow in process, fluff up the portfolio. You know, they say they want to help. Marcus Fungis was, you know, we heard repeatedly how, how long he did the HR by himself, right? This was literally temporary. So, do you have a list that can prove to you? Because this, I again, I have to affirm on this, public funds, public funds. Is, public funds to me as a parent should be going directly in the classroom. How do our kids better benefit? So, can you have a check amounts to say, well, this AIA took care of this. They did this role and there's, and their role as superintendent, did they go X, Y, and Z to do the role of a superintendent? They take, take care of it. Does it justify? And I don't even know how much they want. And there is no timeframe. So, that is very frustrating to see that there, it really is a lack of transparency when it comes to the agenda. How do you, as a board, can make an informed decision when we don't know what's happening? So, if you think that it's justified to use public funds for that, by all means, do it. If not, I would encourage you to at least table it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Negretti. Vice President Tillman has a question for you.
Thank you, Ms. Not have a question, but just want to make a clarification, uh, a clarifying statement. Because this agenda, I do agree that at some point, the formula and the proposed, uh, amount will be made public. But I, I gotta say thank you to all the assistant superintendents that stepped up and performed the role as, uh, administrator in charge. We had a decision to make as a board when the superintendent left, whether we were going to hire a, uh, a interim superintendent from the outside and you would have to pay him what the superintendent was making. Or do we rotate amongst our assistant suits? And because our assistant suits were so, uh, qualified and we had so much confidence in them, we decided to do the rotation. And it turned out, I think, to be the best decision ever. Because, uh, these assistant superintendents have buy-in in our district. So, you don't have somebody coming in that knows that they're leaving. So, they don't, they're not, they don't have to concern that, um, the folks that are here already do. And trust me, when you got to take calls from me as the acting superintendent, it's not the same as being an assistant superintendent. Whoever was the acting assistant superintendent at that time took on the full, uh, um, the full responsibility of that superintendent. And I, and I knew, and they can attest, I knew which one had that role, all board members did. Which one had that role and accepted responsibility for that month. And they did an outstanding job. And, uh, I worked at the county, retired after 42 years. Actually took on jobs that were higher than mine and they had out of class. That's, and I will, I will say this. If there are other issues and other positions in the district we need to take care, we can take care of those positions. But in this case, I have no problem supporting, uh, giving a stipend for the, and it's a formula. It'd be for the amount of time they served as assistant suits. And it would be for the amounts we would have paid a, uh, assistant suit to come in, but we'll make that public. I don't have a problem with that. But I just want to say.
But are you making it public ahead of time?
And, uh, Ms. Negretti, I'm not addressing to you. I just want to make sure the public understands my perspective because you brought it up. So, I don't need, I'm not going to go into a back and forth discussion. I'm just saying, that's my perspective. And that's why, uh, we have this on the agenda night. And it's in closed session, so it'll take, the discussion will take place there.
See, that's what I'm saying. Closed session brings no transparency forward.
But there are certain things by law that have to be taken place in closed session. I agree. I wish we never had to go in that back of the room. I wish everything that we talked about in that room could be public. It can't legally. And when there, there are things that are deemed by our attorneys that must be handled in closed session because of legal reasons, we don't have the choice.
Qualifications wouldn't be one of them. Job description wouldn't be one of them.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Viles.
So, um, I guess I have a, a kind of general statement as well and, and a question, I guess, to the team. So, I mean, we're not going to get into the details of it. I don't necessarily agree with, uh, Mr. Tillman's position entirely. In terms, I, the AICs have done a phenomenal job. Uh, I also want to take the time and, you know, thank each and every one of you for, for stepping up. I think you were placed in that position, um, kind of, kind of by the board in a way. Um, so it wasn't super optional. I mean, what were they going to say? I don't want to do it. So, that's kind of where I disagree. I think the responsibility does fall back on us as a board. Um, but like I said, I'm not going to get into the details of that. The question that I do have though is, um, I, I have questions in regards to specificity, exactly what have our AICs been doing during that time? Because, um, I, I, I see the Friday updates, but I still, again, I should still have a lot of questions in terms of accountability. So, just so that the public also knows, as a board, we have one employee and that's the superintendent. And in the absence of the superintendent, that's been for the last year, we technically have had four employees. And it's a lot more difficult to hold these employees accountable because that's just not the way the system is structured to be. And so, I have my own concerns in regards to that. The question that I do want to ask though, um, our team, and I don't know who can answer this question is, is this information, could this information have been provided in advance? So, for example, the salaries, um, the job descriptions, what Ms. Negretti is asking, because today it is on the agenda, but it's not, um, specifically listed. And, and do we get to vote on this today and then provide the public with the amounts? Um, I guess that's my question currently.
Viles, uh, thank you for the question. I'll try to be as brief as possible. In closed session, you will have the discussion on the amounts and everything. And should the board take action and approve that, there would be a readout so the public could hear those amounts and things like that. In terms of the job descriptions, this is a stipend. And so, there's no job description attached to a stipend, uh, per se. However, we can provide that information as well.
So, I guess to kind of follow up on that question, um, because, uh, what I'm hearing from Ms. Negretti, and please correct me if I'm wrong, and what I'm hearing is that usually when stipends are provided to other employees, it is, they, they are being asked specifically, what are they going to do during those hours? Additional duty work hours, or is that not the case?
Yeah, we do have responsibilities and expectations as the administrator's in charge.
Okay.
And they're public. It's in your personnel report. Everything is in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And, and Ms. Negretti, I will say this, um, we do need to be transparent about things. And if that's the case, and the board, if we choose to move forward with this, then we do need to make it public and put it in print. So, thank you. Alrighty, Ms. Cunningham, are there any other public com, oh, I'm sorry, we did have a public comment come in, um, after the fact. And this was not in regards to closed session, correct? All right. All right. Now, I'll call up at this time. I believe it's Eunice Uribe. Come on up. Thank you.
Nice evening. My name is Eunice Uribe. I am a concerned parent of a high school student. I'd like to know if the district is aware of the smoking going around in the high schools? And if, if the district is, I want to know what they're doing about it. I know that since COVID, um, started or when the students came back to the schools, smoking was going around and it's only getting worse to the point where in between periods, students can't even use the bathrooms because it's always so packed in there. And students don't want to go use the restroom because they don't want to be inhaling all the smoke from weed or whatever it is that the other students are smoking. My student says that he doesn't want to have to miss instruction to go use the restroom. One time he did use the restroom. One time he did use the restroom, but he had to go across the, the school to use it. And when he came back, he says that the security guards, instead of being around trying to look for students who were ditching, they were all in the front of the school just talking instead of doing their actual job. So I'd like to know what the district is gonna do about the situation.
Well, thank you, Ms. Uribe and Eunice. Thank you for correcting me. I'll have Dr. Funches reply to that, you know, briefly, and then it may be chief if we need to, okay? And then we have a couple of lights on.
Ms. Uribe, I want to thank you for your comments. We take all those matters seriously. We take safety seriously as well, and we thank you for bringing that to our attention. What we'll do is we'll have Dr. Rodriguez also weigh in from Student Services and Chief Polino as well on any matter related to CSOs on campus and what we might be doing now to mitigate that. Thank you.
Thank you. So there, we, we understand that it's a problem at all of our campuses. And so currently, we're looking at devices that will detect smoke in and around bathrooms so that we are more responsive and not waiting for someone to tell us or if we just happen to walk across it. We're actually looking at that now through one of our safety committees. If you'd like to participate in that and learn more about how we're, you know, how we're evaluating the need and looking at the equipment that we would be acquiring, be more than happy to have you be part of that committee. So just so that you can understand more, and so we might pilot it at a school, we might go district-wide, but it is still under review at this, you know, at this particular time. Actually, we just started talking about it last week. So it is, we are aware of it. We know that vaping is, you know, something else that's out there that students are, are acquiring. We do have students who are recommended for suspension. So we do have smoking cessation classes for students who are caught with that. But it is definitely a work in progress.
When I spoke to my son's high school, they said that sometimes the smoke alarms go off at their school. So they do have smoke alarms.
Yeah, these are not necessarily smoke alarms, like in the true sense of them. They actually, they activate and they're connected to, I believe, the camera system. And so that was kind of what we have heard. We still have to have the meeting to discuss it so that we know more about the capabilities of the actual equipment and programming. Chief?
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Chief?
And we thank you for your feedback. We hear you. And of course, we'll relay your message to our team to make sure they're more vigilant in terms of your voice. And of course, we'll do our best to make sure that we implement all those things that Dr. Rodriguez spoke about. However, we acknowledge what you're saying and we'll make sure that we have our team active across campus to make sure they're doing their best. Alright, thank you.
How soon do you think we can expect to see any changes or any updates?
I'm sure you'll see changes right away because the assistant chief in charge of that program is right there. Thank you.
Alright, Vice President Tillman, thank you, chief.
Could I ask you what school you're at?
San Bernardino High School.
Okay.
That was my question.
And, and just to be totally transparent, it's, it's, it's a real concern. But it's not just the high school, it's the middle schools, the elementary schools. So maybe with the board's agenda, I just define if there is a true solution. I know, I don't know if you remember earlier last year, we, the, the district actually made the news. And part of it was because of restrooms. And when I talked to a number of principals, their concern was that they denied students from going to the restroom because they think sometimes they're going in there to vape. But how do you, but when you tell a student he can't go to the restroom as a principal or as a teacher because you're thinking of going there to do something inappropriate, when they go home and tell their parent, they're not gonna say, the teacher didn't let me go vape. They're gonna say the teacher let me go to the restroom. So it's a balancing act for us. And then, I mean, I had the, the principal actually explain to me, the, the students go in the stalls, close the door, and hide the vape pens. So, I mean, I'm always looking for solutions, but no parent's gonna allow you to put a camera in a stall, right? So I don't know what the, the actual solution is to ensure that no kids vape or smoke. I think it starts with, at home, and parents telling their kids not to do it. That's the start of it. But then the, the district will continue to play a role in the staffing, maybe more staffing at restrooms. But it is a, a serious issue. But I have to say, I grew up in the eighties and when I, I was, I was the youngest of five kids. And I told my dad, I was about nine years old, and my, my brothers and sister were in high school, San Bernardino High School. And I didn't want to go in the bathroom because it smelled like weed. And I would tell dad, he'd tell me, go, go get, go get your brothers and sister. I don't want to go in there, it smells like weed in the bathroom. So this has been a problem for a long time in schools, but well, we'll, I'm not saying we're not gonna, we're giving up. We have a whole bunch of tools that we use. We have to continue to try to make them better. But we'll look at San Bernardino High School specifically. And thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Chahuski? Oh, I'm sorry, we still got a few more lights.
Thank you, Ms. Uribe. Also, I want to think about prevention and intervention as well because it's not just the safety piece of it. I, we, I know we're, I believe we're revamping insight. Is that correct? Maybe we could get an update on where we are on, on that, which was our drug, our drug classes. I know we've tried to do other interventions, like with Youth Court and other things, and worked with Loma Linda with their drug counseling. But I like to get some updates on where we are with our different programs and our different solutions. So, because it's not just trying to stop them, it's, you know, from catching them in the bathroom, it's also trying to get our kids, you know, not to use.
To stop.
And to stop, yeah. So I think that's a two-part piece. If, if, you know, what are we doing for prevention as in safety and security? And then also, if we can also have updates on our programs that are also doing interventions for our kids. Because I know that's, it has been one of our top, our top issues in terms of suspension and expulsion. So I'd, I'd like to hear that as well. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Ms. Chahuski. And I'll make a final comment and question for our executive cabinet as well. And I literally just did a mini presentation on this yesterday with some of my folks. And we know that tobacco use, marijuana use, vaping is still a concern, actually more of a concern because some of those things didn't exist when we were kids. But, you know, I know one of the grants that is out there is one that we sponsor and work with at the County Office of Education. That's TUPE, and that's Tobacco Use Prevention Education Grant. And I don't know, I know it's been offered to our district, and I don't know who I would ask, but if we applied for the TUPE grant, we could utilize those funds. And obviously, it's about educating our youth, educating our family, educating our staff on tobacco use and other smoking products. So, Dr. Rodriguez or Ms. Applegate, I don't know who I'd ask about, oh, Ms. Antovetos, she was raising her hand, so it was Antovetos.
I do not know specifically about whether we've applied for that one, but it is my department that would research that and bring information back to the district. So we'll go looking into that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will also reach out to my colleagues at the county to find out, you know, what we need to do to incorporate their services and supports as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Uribe, I understand you've been in contact with the principal at San Bernardino High School, so we'll follow with you tomorrow, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, folks, and great public comments, a lot of interaction there. Thank you. We normally don't do that, but these topics are very important to us, so we appreciate you. Okay, we will now, and let me get caught up there. I'm gonna ask one more time, any more comments, Ms. Cunningham? Is that it? Alright, very good, thank you. So at this time, we'll go to 5.2, closed session agenda, and we will go ahead and convene the closed session and then come back out when we're done. Thank you. Alright, folks, we'll call this board meeting back in session. 6.1, consideration and approval for superintendent. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves appointment of the following: Mauricio Ariano, Superintendent, effective date to be determined.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, most unanimously carries, 7-0. And let me say this, that's the first time I've seen a 7-0 vote in 14 months. So, thank you. So I am overly emotional right now. It's been a long time coming. So on behalf of the Board of Education, Executive Cabinet, please join me in congratulating and welcoming Mr. Mauricio Ariano back to the San Bernardino Unified School District as our new superintendent. We are looking forward to working with you side by side and building upon the great work already happening throughout our district. Mr. Ariano, at this time, I'd like to invite you to come forward and welcome you to share a few words.
Second, San Bernardino. President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, distinguished members of the board, colleagues, district partners, parents, and students. It truly is a sincere honor here tonight and a privilege to be appointed as superintendent of the San Bernardino Unified School District. Please know that I am humbled. This moment is truly special. It's very personal and it's very emotional for me. And frankly speaking, it, it's a dream come true for me. Dream come true. This is probably the most nervous I'll ever be, so forgive me. As many of you may or may not know, I was raised in San Bernardino, not too far from here, as a matter of fact, on a street named Berkeley. Right between Baseline and 13th Street and between F and G Street, near what used to be Groove Time Records. As we all know, I worked there for 10 years as a young man. So this is more than just family and home. This is coming back to community that meant so much to me. I attended Riley Elementary School, Golden Valley Middle School, graduated from San Bernardino High School, started my career here in San Bernardino City Unified as an elementary bilingual teacher at Muscoi Elementary, transitioned into administration as an assistant principal, then an elementary principal, and then a director of certificated human resources where I'm so proud to notice so many educators and administrators here in San Bernardino who are still in the district where I had a small part in their selection. So that makes me feel really good that folks are still here. My father retired from the San Bernardino City Unified School District after 30 years of working as a school custodian and in the maintenance and operation yard. So this is truly a, a coming home moment for me. And more importantly, a golden opportunity to give back to the district and to the community gave so much to me as a kid. And I'm trying to hold back the tears, guys. I'm not gonna promise anything. I would be remiss, though, if I did not thank and show my gratitude to the Redlands Unified Board of Trustees, my colleagues, community members, parents, and students in Redlands for the trust and support that you have given me over the past five and a half years. Their support of my leadership and their support and their understanding of my decision to return home has been very much appreciated and they will always hold a very special place in my heart. And I want to thank my cabinet members, our board members for being here tonight, and staff from Redlands. Thank you for being here. That means so much to me, more than, than you'll ever know. Family, family. I want to take a moment also to acknowledge and show my appreciation to my beautiful family, all of their love and support and for strongly encouraged me to return to San Bernardino. And I will apologize in advance. My kids ate all the chips upstairs, so you might have to reload, so. But with me tonight is my beautiful wife and soulmate, Kim. My daughters, Alyssa, Venice, my son, Dino. And I believe my daughter Erin, who's at work, she's watching in. Love you, Erin. They are my rock and I thank them for their unrelenting support and their unconditional love of me and, and my career. So thank you, guys, for everything that you do for me. To my San Bernardino colleagues, my new team, my new family, I'm beyond excited to start this journey with you. And I want you to clearly know that I'm here to celebrate your accomplishments and successes and to build on them. I am here to motivate you and encourage you to think big on behalf of our 47,000 students. I am here to work in a collaborative manner because I believe in the power of "we," not in the power of "me." I am here to be your biggest cheerleader. I'm here to serve you and helping to serve our schools, our students, our parents, and our community. I am here to lock arms with you in the name of healing, in the name of unity, and in the name of student success, and to catapult the San Bernardino Unified School District into a calibrated vision where everyone across the district, in their own unique roles, see their significance, their impact, and relevance to that vision. So I want you to know, I take this job seriously and it's a true privilege to be back here with all of you. To the members of the San Bernardino City Unified School District Board of Education. When I look at our new team, here's what I see, everybody. I see brilliance. I see commitment. I see enthusiasm. I see diversity. I see wisdom. I see institutional knowledge. I see fresh ideas. I see healing. I see passion. I see unification and I see a team that's ready for excellence. The recipe for continued success and innovative progress for all of our students is in place. So I say to all of you, let's roll up our sleeves and let's get to it. We got lots of work to do. Lots of work to do. There are so many additional people in my life who I could and should thank for helping me to get this moment in my career, to getting here to my career. And I'm grateful to each one of those people, but we'd be here all night if I listed those folks out. However, tonight, there are just a few giants whose shoulders I've stood on that I'd like to mention tonight and dedicate this evening to. And forgive me in advance if I get a little choked up. To my third grade teacher at Riley Elementary, Ms. Marilyn Temple, who changed the trajectory of my life and who took the time to teach me English and helped me believe in myself when others didn't. And more importantly, for showing me the love of the Los Angeles Lakers, by the way. She showed me how to be student-centered. She showed me what it takes to help a kid be successful. And she's always with me in my heart as an educator. To Narciso Cardona, my first principal, for taking a chance and hiring me as an untrained, uncredentialed teacher. He saw something in me and this opportunity connected me with that special fifth grade class at Muscoi of 1993 whose class pictures remains prominently shown and displayed in my office and every office that I've sat since then. And of which, one of your principals and a few of those teachers in this district were students in that class. And I can't tell you how proud I am of them. But here I am, 30-plus years later, based on Mr. Cardona's decision to take a chance on me. And I've loved every moment of that career. So I want to say to him, gracias jefe por tu apoyo, y te mando un fuerte abrazo, which says, "Thank you for your support and I send you a big hug." I know he's listening tonight. To Harold, to Dr. Harold Volkmer, Mr. Slick, right? Mr. Slick, love Harold. And Dr. E. Neil Roberts, the late E. Neil Roberts, for serving as strong mentors to me and teaching me to be a servant leader and for giving me the opportunities to grow as a professional. I'm forever grateful for your leadership model, for your friendship and your belief in me. And I know Harold's watching in, so I'm gonna tell him he owes me a lunch at Taco Bender now that we're back in town, so. To Dr. Margaret Hill, for her friendship, wisdom, kindness, for her impact to me as a person. You know, when I was a student at San Bernardino High School and she served as the assistant principal, she watched over me. And later, when we became colleagues working together as principals, she ingrained in me the most important motto an educator can adopt and hold. It's all about the children. It's all about the children. And finally, to my mom and dad. May they both continue to rest in peace. They were so excited and so proud when I became a teacher in San Bernardino City Unified School District that I can't imagine how they would have felt sitting here tonight, knowing that I'd be coming back home. So I hope that they're smiling down at me and proud, and I think they are. So, love them. And in closing, I want to speak directly to the remarkable students of the San Bernardino City Unified School District and their families. I am in awe of your brilliance. I am in awe of your creativity. I am in awe of your resilience and tenacity. And I am in awe of the efforts you you put forth each day to carve out your future in this world. I know your sacrifices. I know your fears and challenges. I know your aspirations because I was you and I am you. So we, as a district, we're going to keep working hard, just like you all have been doing before I got here. We're going to keep working hard on your behalf to provide you a world-class education, to prepare you for the future that you wish to seek, to ensure access to extracurricular activities so that you are connected and engaged, to maintain a safe and learning environment so you can concentrate on growing as a scholar and as a person, and to provide individual support when you need it so you never feel the sense of hopelessness that can interrupt your dreams. We will be there to hold you up, to cheer you on, and to champion your every step that you take towards success. I look forward to spending time with you on your campuses and getting to know your wonderful stories. So again, to the Board of Education, to everybody who's held me up on their shoulders, to my colleagues, to my old high school friends, to my former, soon-to-be former board member staff, everybody who's poured in so much into me. Thank you so much in believing in me. Thank you for trusting me and giving me this opportunity and the honor and the privilege to guide this remarkable school district into its next chapter of its truly historic legacy. Love you, guys. Thank you.
Well, Superintendent Ariano, once again, welcome back home. I was doing okay until you had to go and talk about Dr. Hill and more importantly, your mom and dad. I'm, without doubt, know they're very proud of you, as we are as well. Just want to know, we look forward to your leadership, and we definitely look forward to the many milestones that we're going to accomplish together, the good times and the bad. I'm going to give you one more chance before I read this contract out and we sign it to, you know, say, "I don't know," because that was a short closed session. I want you to know that. Compared to others, absolutely. But no. Mr. Ariano, we're definitely very privileged and honored to have you join us and to lead our district, you know, not just now, but into the 25th century as we prepare our students, definitely for college and career and for their better futures, for their family and our city. And I have some comments, it looks like, from one of my colleagues, Ms. Rosales Medina.
I just want to say, I'm really excited, the fact that you do have the knowledge and the expertise of, and being a former resident here as well, you know, living, having your family. And so all of that is a huge piece in really understanding our students and really working with our communities here. I do also want to acknowledge the fact that you have staff members and a school board member, Alex Vara, who's the vice president for Redlands Unified School District. The fact that they're here to support you also speaks volumes. So I wanted to say, I'm sure they're going to miss you, but we're very lucky to have you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Ms. Saviles?
So I also want to say, you know, welcome, and I'm looking forward to working with you. I'm really, really excited. I think that, you know, things happen just the way that they're meant to happen, and I think that you're here at the right time. And so I just want to say that and say, you know, welcome. I have very, very high hopes and high expectations. But I'm, like I said, I'm looking forward to working with you. And, you know, thank you for, you know, Redlands so graciously giving us over your precious superintendent. So thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Saviles. Mr. Husky?
Welcome home. Thank you to Redlands. Your losses are gain, and I know exactly, you know, what you are losing, and we appreciate, you know, we appreciate you for that. Mauricio, Mr. Ariano, I'll have to get used to that. I couldn't be more excited to have you back in the fold. I was, you know, blessed to work with you as a colleague, and I know your heart and your compassion for our staff and for our students. And I can't think of anybody better to lead us in this next phase. And I just, I'm just so happy right now. I'm like, I'm also been like, a little emotional. And, you know, us San Bernardino kids, we do good. I think people underestimate us, but we have, we have a lot of gifts, and I'm looking forward to seeing yours up here on the dais, working with us in the district.
Thank you, Ms. Husky. Ms. Marion Aviles Grande?
I too say that we are all very blessed to have you back. And as you well know, I have a little special blessing. I actually lived on Berkeley when he was about 14 or 15, and I think I was a waitress then, and you were school. And then, many years later, I marched into the HR office and I demanded that you find my application because I didn't want to go back and work at Colton another year. I wanted to work at home. And you were HR, and you did not give up until you found it. And I did not leave the building without a contract. And for that, I will be forever grateful. I'm here because of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. Ms. Alexander?
Mr. Ariano, congratulations. I think it's super awesome, and the school district is very fortunate to get you back. The very fact that you grew up in the city, you went to school, and did the whole matriculation here is definitely a gain for us and actually an inspiration to our students. So congratulations, and we really welcome you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Vice President Tillman?
I know. Thank you for accepting the position here. You'll be able to do things for our students that others can't because you were born and raised in San Bernardino, and you've seen a lot of successes here, and you know what it takes to meet students where they're at and allow them to shine and become the professionals that we can make them. You know, I was talking to a guy that I golf with. We both went to San Bernardino High School. And we talked, I was talking about some of the trauma that our students experience here in San Bernardino. And I asked him, I said, "When you went to San Bernardino High School in the 80s, and somebody said, 'We're going to meet at the church, at the school,' what were they going to do?" And you laugh because you were going to fight at the church. That's crazy. But that's, that's some of the trauma that some of our students deal with day in and day out. But it doesn't mean they don't have the potential to go on and do great things. You understand that. You can relate to that. And that means you're going to build the tools to ensure that those kids can overcome a lot of the challenges that they experience. So I'm very excited to welcome you here and look forward to working with you to make as many of our students successful as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Dr. Funches?
Good evening, Mr. Ariano. On behalf of our executive cabinet team, myself, it's Anna Applegate, Dr. Sandra Rodriguez, Chief Polino, Gendron Taveros, the superintendent's office, Mohammed over here. We welcome you. We look forward to your leadership, sir. This is your seat. We are in it for this current time, but we look forward to working with you to make, make sure this district continues in its excellent trajectory. We appreciate having you, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Funches. And now I can officially call you boss. I like that. I think I was a little bit overly optimistic and anxious and said 25th century, but 2025 for future excellence. But I definitely would be remiss to not say thank you to your Redlands Unified School District staff as well. Such an amazing team you have over there. And I know you have a lot of work to do over there as well. And the only way it gets done is with this outstanding team and then with your board leadership as well. I see your board back there, too. So thank you to you, Redlands. We're more than happy to take them from you. I'm sorry, but we're excited to have them here and bring them home. All right. At this time, please be patient with me. We're going to move on to 6.2, and I'm going to read over the contract. And after that, we can open a discussion, and if there's no discussion, we'll go to vote. The Brown Act requires that this board make an oral report in open session before taking final action on an employment agreement for a local agency executive summarizing any recommendation regarding compensation, including salary and/or fringe benefits. Consistent with this requirement, the board provides this oral summary of the salary and fringe benefits as set forth in the proposed employment agreement for superintendent between Sanrio City Unified Unified School District and Mauricio Ariano. Contract term effective April 17, 2023 through June 30, 2026. Annual salary of $364,000 with eligibility for increases commensurate with increases provided to certificated bargaining unit members contingent on superintendent's receipt of a satisfactory valuation. Paid vacation at 24 days per year with year-to-year accrual of maximum of 48 days. $9,000 annual auto allowance in lieu of mileage reimbursement. $18,000 annual housing allowance contingent on a superintendent's primary resident being within the district boundaries. District provided technology for both district and reasonable personal use. Identification in the event of negative causters audit finding. Reimbursement for attendance at conferences and membership dues in professional organizations, as well as business-related expenses. Paid sick leave up to 30 days per year. Paid medical, dental, and vision insurance coverage on the same terms as other certificated management employees, as well as post-retirement medical benefits contingent upon 15 years of service to the district. Reimbursement at up to $2,000 annually for the payment of life insurance premiums. That concludes the board's report pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, subsection C, subsection 3. I will now open this item for discussion and action. A mode?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Let's go ahead and vote.
I'm sorry, it's 7-0, but it's not coming up.
I love technology sometimes, Ms. Cunningham, but I'll take your word on it. All right. Congratulations, Superintendent Ariano. Welcome to Sanrio City Unified Unified School District. Just so you know, we'll be signing that this evening, so we'll get that to you in hand as soon as possible. Okay? Thank you, sir. And thank you, everyone, for being patient with us and for sticking around to see our new superintendent become appointed by the board. Super exciting times for us. And as I said earlier, the first time we've had a seven-person board in 14 months. 14 months. This has been a long time coming. It is now our time here in Sanrio City Unified School District. Like you said, Mr. Ariano, we're going to roll up our sleeves and get this work done. We couldn't have a better team to do it. So thank you, everyone, for being here. All right, let's go ahead and move on. 6.3 consideration. Okay, no, I'm sorry. 6.3 is going to be tabled, correct? When we look at that. So 6.3, Ms. Cunningham, will be tabled for further discussion and further meeting. 6.4 will also be tabled for further discussion and another meeting. 6.5 expulsion of students. Be resolved, Board of Education accepts and adopts or recommendation, findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's findings of facts and recommendations, and orders expulsion of following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code 48900. So vote.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Discussion, Ms. Saviles?
Yeah, I just wanted to pull item 517486.
Number 517486, is that correct?
517486, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more time?
517486.
Okay, five, student number 517486. That may be a different item. I don't see that on this current, on 6.5. Are you on 6.5, Ms. Saviles?
I think it's like the third number.
It's 517489.
Oh, you're right.
Is that the one that you wanted to pull? Okay, let's look. The PDF is a different number?
Yeah, it's 86 in the PDF.
Thank you for correcting. Let me double check. You are absolutely correct. So we do have an error on the initial page, but on the PDF is the correct number. So we're going to pull, and we need to make sure we correct that in a minute, please. Number 517486. Any other items to poll? Ms. Husky?
I'd like to pull 484168, please.
484168? Okay. Any other discussion or items to poll? All right, let's go ahead and vote on 6.5 with 517486 and 464168 being pulled.
Mr. Tillman?
All right, my apologies for the sidebar there. Motion carries, 7-0. All right, pardon me on the agenda right now. I did have a...
Well, 517486, I'll make a motion to approve. Because you wanted to table yours, right? Yeah, but I thought she pulled it because she wanted to vote.
Okay, my apologies. Thank you, Mr. Tillman. So we'll go ahead and vote separately on 517486?
Make a motion to approve, 517486.
Spin motion and properly second. Any discussion on 517486? Hearing none. Let's go ahead and vote. All right, I'm asking for a little assistance there.
It did pass.
It did pass?
It did not.
It did not pass. So I believe it was four nays, three ayes. Is that correct? Okay. All right, motion does not pass. We will move on to number 464168.
Do you want to move to table? I pulled it previously, and it's back on, and it hasn't been resolved. So I want to hold...
You'd like to table that?
Because the issues have not been resolved.
With consensus with the board, Ms. Saviles? Vice President Tillman? I agree. Yes, yes. All right, we will table 464168. Okay, before we move on to...
Just for clarification, it's not 484168? It's 484168.
Okay, we will table 484168. Thank you for the correction. We're going to move on to 6.6, but before we do so, I did have a question over here with Dr. Funches, and I absolutely agree with him. And I know... over here with Dr. Funches, and I absolutely agree with him, and I know Superintendent Ariano, this is not your first day, but I do think maybe we should take some time, maybe for some pictures real quick if you'd like, and I think that would be very nice, not just for your family, but also for our board. Maybe premature, but why not, right? It's time to celebrate, so is that okay with you? this and hope we get out of here a decent time tonight. All right, thank you. Six point six, be it resolved, the Board of Education authorize expulsion and/or youth court modification, expungement, or rescinding of the following students with identification numbers as indicated below to schools of Samuel City Unified School District in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code forty-eight nine hundred.
A move?
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All right, hearing none, let's go ahead and vote. A motion carries, moving on to six point seven. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts or recommendation and findings of facts of positive development and/or suspension and/or expulsion of following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and compliance with Educational Code forty-eight nine hundred.
A move?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and vote.
[inaudible]
All right, folks, let's go ahead and get back on agenda so we can move quickly through All right, folks, let's go ahead and get back on agenda so we can move quickly through this and hope we get out of here a decent time tonight. Six point six, be it resolved, the Board of Education authorize expulsion and/or youth court modification, expungement, or rescinding of the following students with identification numbers as indicated below to schools of Samuel City Unified School District in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code forty-eight nine hundred.
A move?
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All right, hearing none, let's go ahead and vote. A motion carries, moving on to six point seven. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts or recommendation and findings of facts of positive development and/or suspension and/or expulsion of following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and compliance with Educational Code forty-eight nine hundred.
A move?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and vote. A motion carries, six point eight. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the following students for recommended for expulsion, but expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence, and/or devalability of other means of correction and compliance with Education Code Section forty-eight nine hundred. Therefore, all that are recommended for expulsion, expulsion is not granted.
Vote?
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries, moving on to six point nine, lift of expulsion of students. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorize the remission of following students with identification numbers as indicated below to schools of Samuel City Unified School District in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section forty-eight nine hundred.
A move?
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and vote. A motion carries, moving on to six point ten. Other closed session action, there is no other closed session action at this time, so move on to seven point oh, public hearings. All right, we'll go ahead and close the current session, reopen. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves an increase in statutory school fees imposed on new residential, commercial, industrial construction pursuant to Education Code Section seventeen six twenty and Government Code Section six five nine nine five. Ms. Cunningham, are there any public comments?
There are none.
There are none. Okay, we'll go ahead and...
Yeah, so vote?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All right, hearing none, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries, thank you, and we'll go and close the public hearing, reopen. Eight point oh, reports and presentations. Eight point one, California School Board Association Legal Services Program. All right, at this time, we're going to, boy, I'm going to have to make sure I pronounce this one right, Bob, so we're going to welcome Bob Turick? Is that it? And Mariela Martinez with CSBA's District and County Office of Education Legal Services, who will provide the board with information on legal trainings, including the Brown Act and Form seven hundred. Welcome and thank you for your patience.
Short version.
Thank you very much for having us. We will, we will do our best to keep this as short as possible, I know it's late night. Let me first start off with thank you for pronouncing my name correctly, I know it's a challenge. My name is Bob Turk, I'm the chief legal counsel for CSBA's District and County Office of Education Legal Services Program. You all have been members of CSBA for quite some time, we're your association, we provide all sorts of services for all of our member districts and county offices of education. We recently launched a new program, this legal services program, that we're going to discuss with you today and share a little bit of the information about how we can hopefully benefit your district and help you out with any of your needs that you might have through this program. Before we get started with that, I just want to give you a little bit of my background and why I do this for CSBA. I used to sit in your seat, not for this district, but for a school district and also on a county office of education board, so I've sat on that side of the table. I've spent my entire professional career as an attorney, I've litigated against government agencies, I've litigated for government agencies, and when an opportunity came for me to go to CSBA and kind of marry those two things that I love, get out of the courtroom and get into the boardroom, but bring those together so that I could actually serve students, much like you do, through a different mechanism and through my knowledge and experience, I jumped at that chance. And so I'm very honored to be here in front of you all to talk about this program, but I also want to just take a moment because I know what you all do on a daily basis, and I know how difficult this job can be, so thank you all, each of you, for your service and the time that you're putting into this. It's, it's a challenge, but it is a very meaningful job that you do, so thank you all for that. So what is our legal services program? So essentially what this program is, if I use your clicker correctly, Legal Services is a subscription-based program where our members can sign up for this program, and it creates an attorney-client relationship between the district and the attorneys on our legal services team. It's not an attorney-client relationship with all of CSBA, it's with the attorneys who work for this program, so like myself and Ms. Martinez here, as well as Alex Worthy, who's had some conversations with members of your staff in the past. It creates that confidential attorney-client privileged relationship that allows us to give legal advice and counsel, whereas previously CSBA was not able to do that. Somebody might call with a question about a policy or a Brown Act issue, and it would go across into the borders of legal advice, and we would have to defer away because we didn't have that confidential relationship with you. If you sign up for this program, it creates that relationship that allows us to serve you in more depth at CSBA. So it's comprised of basically two services that I'm going to let Mariela go into greater detail on. It's that attorney-client piece, and then there's a database piece that gives you a whole bunch of different resources that she'll talk about. When you subscribe to this service, it also opens the door for a lot of different training opportunities, which I will cover after she goes through this next part.
Thank you so much, Bob, and thank you all for having us here this evening. I want to expand upon a couple of items that Bob mentioned. The first is the attorney relationships that are formed by legal services subscribers and CSBA attorneys, and as CSBA attorneys, we can provide confidential advice and services to your district, and we can help your district with a host of issues, and those are listed on our slide here. They really run the gamut. We can provide assistance with respect to independent investigations, contact, contract review, customized policy writing, disciplinary actions, student matters, discipline resolution, dispute resolution, I'm sorry, confidential consulting, as well as provide advice and counseling regarding special education, board governance, the Brown Act, the CVRA, the CPRA, and facilities, as well as the California Environmental Quality Act. Again, the areas of law that we covered really run the gamut. I'd like to discuss now a little bit of our resource library, again, that, that Bob mentioned, and it's the second component of our program, and subscribers have unlimited access, twenty-four-hour access to this library, which is updated regularly. The library consists of two broad categories of documents. We currently have over eleven thousand documents, and the first is a searchable database of thousands of salary schedules, CBAs, and MOUs to help prepare for negotiations, as well as recruit and retain personnel. And the second is a searchable repository of case updates, guidance documents, publications, templates, and other self-help resources. So I am going to move on to the next slide, and, next one actually, and you can see a snapshot of our legal resources library. You can see, for instance, up above that you have tabs for agreements or other legal resources, the two categories to which I referred earlier. You can also filter your results to narrow down and focus on what it is that you're actually looking for. You can filter according to ADA, county, region, the type of document that you're looking for, et cetera. Again, this is our legal resource library. Finally, I think I want to mention that you can also save documents and save your searches so that you don't have to, to reinvent the wheel every time you want to go back to those. So that's it for me, I think. I'll turn it right back to you.
I just wanted to point out, the reason we created this database and this resource library to go along with this program is that we want, this program isn't just about another attorney coming or law firms doing what law firms do. We really want to provide a service for our members, and so this is part of the service that comes with this, is that you have this twenty-four-hour-seven access to resources that previously, to my knowledge, there's no repository like this available on the management side of the table. So just looking at the kinds of resources that we can provide to you through this service, this is just one of them, and we wanted to make sure that there's always value, even if you don't have to call on your attorneys, right? Because the idea is if we create that attorney-client relationship, then we essentially become kind of like in-house counsel. We don't go do litigation, God forbid you end up in a lawsuit, we're not going to be the ones representing you in that lawsuit. Our job's to help keep you out of the lawsuit. We answer the day-day-day questions, we help with Brown Act things, we help with preparing for meetings or other resources, changes in the law that come up and things of that nature, but we want to make sure that for all of our members who sign up for this, there's value, even if they're not actually having to engage with their attorneys at the time. So that's what that database is about. And then additional benefits that come with sort of doing this program is we do legal trainings, which is, I know, a topic that you guys have inquired about, and so our legal trainings for this program is really, it's kind of a two-fold event. CSBA provides all sorts of training opportunities already, right? We have our MIG programs, we have our annual conference, we have all sorts of things that many board members participate in, and with legal services, we now have two additional trainings, which is... And with legal services, we now have two additional trainings, which is essentially this sort of come-all aspect. So for example, this Brown Act up there, on March 1st, we're gonna be holding a Brown Act training that's really focused around board presidents and executive assistants and their role. Any CSBA members, welcome to come to that. It's gonna be conducted by the attorneys on our team and we'll be there to walk people through the, and answer questions. But then we also have this sort of more nuanced, district-specific training that's available. And the Brown Act's just an example. We do other kinds of trainings. But the, the more nuanced ones, I'm not gonna name the district, but there is a district that's a client of ours that found themselves in a little bit of trouble. As part of a settlement that they entered into, they were ordered to go into certain trainings. So what we did is sat down and went through their settlement agreement and we talked about what they needed and created a custom training around their needs. Now, it doesn't always have to be that extreme, right? It doesn't need to be, you've gotten yourself in trouble and now you're ordered to do training. There can be other needs that are along the way, right? And so we can help to create those trainings and then you get that legal training from our team. If it happens to be something like if you, you know, you're requesting a training around a governance issue, we do already have governance consultants. And so we'll pair up with that team and we'll talk to them and figure out, is that the better route to go? Because we don't want you to be spending time and money on attorneys if there is another resource that's gonna be more effective and more efficient for your district. Because we're not out here to make giant profits off of this. We're here to provide services for our members and that's what the program's about. And so with that, we also have a couple of other benefits, just to make sure that our members are getting something out of this. So we've listed some of them up here. We do a monthly lunch and learn series. So any client can log into this series and basically it's a one-hour webinar. Not really a webinar, more of like a Zoom meeting. Where the three of us, our attorneys, will sit down and cover a topic. Our next one will be talking about actually Narcan use in schools. We've talked about Brown Act. We talked sort of about whatever the hot issue is that month that we, we've prepared to talk about. And then we open it up to who's ever on the call. Obviously, we're not gonna get into client-protected conversations there, but we're there to provide general legal advising, answer questions for our clients in that. We also have the resource library that Mariela talked about and there's member-exclusive content in there, client-exclusive contact, content in there, as well as discounts on, I'm really proud of this one, so we put it up there. A book that we put together with LexisNexis, I don't know if you guys are familiar with them. They're one of the premier legal research entities in this country. And we paired up with them to create a book, a three-volume book. It's three volumes of all the statutes and regulations in California law that impact K-12 education. So it's one consolidated resource for everyone in the education community to be able to go to that volume instead of having to buy like six, seven different volumes. All the laws are in one place for you. And so we paired up with them to create that. And all of our clients get discounts to that. So, and the, the really fun part about this for us as attorneys is that we, we aren't out there churning billable hours. In fact, we give you three hours upfront that we don't even bill you for at all. But we do have to keep our doors open, so there is a cost associated with it. It's 10% of your CSBA annual dues. After those first three hours of attorney time, our attorneys only bill at $200 an hour, which is substantially less than most attorneys bill at. And then we, like I said, we have those first three hours. So if you sign up for the program and you only use that resource library, we'll probably remind you, hey, don't forget you have three hours of time that you're not getting paid for. That can go towards trainings. That can go towards agenda prep, whatever you need us to, to work on. Even attending board meetings and sitting here with you at the, at the board if you wanted us to. So that is sort of the program in a nutshell. We wanted to just explain to you what it is that we offer and then open it up to any questions that you all may have for us about the program.
Well, thank you both for your presentation and, board, do we have any questions or comments? Ms. Avios.
I just have, I just have a comment. But first of all, you know, I want to thank you for coming out and sharing this information. I think that I would like for us to really, you know, consider and, you know, have a discussion at some point, maybe of, you know, potentially bringing this item back on the agenda to, to, you know, look into if this is something that we would like to, you know, have. I think that there's a lot of great resources and, you know, having some new members on the board, I think it'd be really beneficial, just so that we kind of stay, you know, fresh and on top of, of a lot of these. For me, I've been here for two years, so I'm not new anymore. We have new, new, but I still have tons of questions and something like this would be really beneficial for me personally. So I would like for us to, you know, consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Avios. And I think we'll always have questions. We, we got this guy next to me. It's been almost 30 years and I still ask him questions. So they will always come up. All right, board, any other questions? Okay, well definitely both, thank you for being here this evening. Again, thank you for your patience and we'll probably be in touch with you soon, so. Have a safe drive and a good night. Thank you.
Congratulations on your superintendent as well.
We appreciate it. Thank you. All right, moving on to 8.2, college and career presentation. I'm gonna hand that back over to AIC, Dr. Funches.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt and board. As our team gets prepared to introduce to you a quick update or an update around college and career success, I did want to point out the amazing work going on under the leadership of Anna Applegate and the whole ed services team. And what you're gonna hear tonight is definitely exciting, some innovative work and some progress around college and career success. And the three-stool, the three-pronged stools, if, if you will, shows right there the academic priorities, the career pathways that our scholars have access to as well, and the college ready, college readiness that you'll hear about. And board, what you'll hear is a testament to your direction, your priorities, and your commitment to our district, as well as interdepartmental collaboration and the support and actions of our union groups, union leaders, and our staff across the district. So thank you, Ms. Applegate. Thank you, team. Take it away.
Good evening, board president, Dr. Wyatt, board members, cabinet, parents and community. My name is Sudha Venkatesan and I'm the director of secondary and college and career. And I also want to congratulate and welcome our new superintendent to our district. Today, I'm pleased to bring you our update on college and career initiatives happening at San Bernardino City Unified. As a board, you not only have the vision of what it takes for our students to be college and career-ready, but also support the work with aligning their resources. During the course of this presentation, you will see how aligned your board priorities are for the college and career success work in our district. I have an incredible team of colleagues that are here today and my department staff that I'm honored to lead. But for them, this work is not possible. I'm also thankful for the teacher partners in this work, who are extremely passionate about this work. College and career posits on three important domains, herein shown visually as three legs of a stool. The objectives of this presentation is to emphasize the importance of the three domains where the academics, college readiness, and pathways intertwine. The coherence between these domains is essential to create access, equity, and inclusion for all students. The first, the first leg of the stool is the academics domain. This refers to all strategies and initiatives that SBCUSD is implementing with the leadership of our esteemed board and cabinet to support and maximize each student's ability to learn. The second leg is college readiness domain, also referred to as college knowledge. This includes an understanding of the options that exist beyond high school, requirements for applying to and financing post-secondary education, learning how to apply for colleges, understanding how early college credits help, and many other aspects of going to college. The final leg is the pathway domain. This leg helps students to understand the connection between the school and the world of work. It helps them plan for and makes, make a successful transition from sec, from school to post-secondary education and to work. What you see here is the current team that has been absorbed into secondary and its services to build coherence between the domains that I just shared with you previously. Board with your support, we are expanding the team to move the work faster. There is a role for every department and division to work on college and career priorities. Our cabinet's vision was to create an interdepartmental team to move the college and career needle. Every college and career initiative is being done through committee work by bringing different stakeholders together to get their opinion and feedback on the decision-making process. We also work very closely with the SVTA leadership to get input on all college career initiatives on a weekly basis. We are in the process of creating a college and career success cadre that will be co-led by the district and SVTA. We will have high school administrators, district administrators, counselors, CTE program specialists, teachers, and students as members of this cadre. As I previously mentioned in the objectives, college and career success for students is a three-legged stool. If you remove or eliminate even one of the legs, a student will not be college and career-ready. Our approach has been to bring coherence to these systems to create the right environment for every student to be college and career-ready. These systems span multiple departments and divisions and that is why interdepartmental and interdivisional approaches creep. I have highlighted the board priorities and board-supported specific initiatives within the college priorities. The pink highlights are among the top 10 board priorities. And the blue highlights are where the board specifically provided resources to make them happen. As you can see, there is such a tight alignment to what you call out as important for our students and to the college and career work that is supported by research. I will be expanding on some of these areas during this presentation with a special focus to our board priorities on this subject. Our academic priorities. Our first domain or leg is academic priorities for college and career success and I will go over some areas of this. A through G completion, it's a board priority. Increasing the A through G completion rate is an important focus as a district, which is also our board's priority. School sites are working hard to ensure more and more students successfully complete the A through G requirements. That begins with all of our students being scheduled to the right classes for their four-year high school journey. These class schedules are now electronically done through Ares. I will go over them a little bit more in detail in the next section. Due to the support from the board, we have hired eight additional teachers to increase access for world languages. Schools are strengthening their credit recovery system to ensure that students are provide, provided multiple opportunities to recover their credits. Those efforts are supported by superintendent and summer grad at the district level to provide the last bit effort to capture credits for seniors so they can graduate. Schools have created support classes to reduce gaps in ELA and mathematics and to increase the pass rates in those crucial content areas. We are putting the process in motion for a master schedule opportunity review to ensure access and equity for all course offerings and review our scheduling process and allocation of resources to reach especially our vulnerable students. We have a board policy draft for a three-tier graduation aligned with A through G requirements for tier one, ready for our secondary. As part of increasing the A through G success, we realized that access to the world language courses was not equitable across school sites. So with the support of the board, we have added eight additional world language teachers, which we are in the process of hiring. We are also expanding opportunities for students to take world language courses through dual enrollment where just one college semester course meets two years of our A through G requirement. Mathematics is a huge focus for the district. We are in the process of hiring resident guest teachers at each and every secondary school to support math instruction and intervention. This is, this is similar to the approach that elementary has done for early literacy. We have a district-created math intervention curriculum for Integrated Math 1, which is a pivotal course for a student's high school journey. In addition to this, we have several electronic intervention programs like iXL, Imagine Math, Map Accelerator. Additionally, we also have free tutoring services like Brainfuse online tutoring and Valdez in-person tutoring available to all students. We are providing professional development for teachers in educational technology to personalize instruction in mathematics classroom. Finally, we have established a high school and middle school PLC that looks at NWA data closely and collaboratively develops instructional decisions to inform instruction. Financial literacy, which is a board priority. Financial, in order to provide equity and access, we have developed multiple courses that will ensure financial literacy skills reach all students, as well as help with the A through G completion using committees. We are creating a mathematics course called Financial Algebra and Modeling as an alternative to Integrated Math 3 for students who are going, who are planning to go into the fields where statistics is a foundational requirement, but calculus is not. By offering this course, we will increase the A through G math pass rate. Also, we are creating a consumer math with financial literacy course for seniors that will be going into the workforce or community college following high school graduation. A third base students can gain financial literacy skills is through the creation of economics with financial literacy. This course embeds financial literacy concepts into the current 12th grade economics curriculum. Finally, financial literacy is a CTE standard, Career Technical Education standard. So we are ensuring that all pathways address this financial literacy standard in the CTE courses through some modifications in the curriculum. Ethnic studies is also our board priority. Our board was the first ever to adopt a policy on ethnic studies, even before other districts and states mandated it as a high school graduation requirement. Due to that work on ethnic studies, due to that, work on ethnic studies started in our district much early. State and our district board policy mandates that ethnic studies must be offered beginning 24-25 school year for the graduating class of 29-30. I'm happy to inform you that we are very much on track to have our curriculum completed to meet the state and district, district policy guidelines. Like financial literacy, we are offering different options for ethnic studies to help reach all students. Again, this is done through different committee work. In the first column, you can see ethnic studies is offered as an elective course, as a year-long course, as a semester course, and a six-weeks course specifically geared towards continuation school. We are also offering ethnic studies through 11th grade US history, race, and gender, which will satisfy the history as well as the ethnic studies requirement. Lastly, we are offering ethnic studies through 11th grade ELA called Ethnic Studies Literature, which will satisfy the ELA as well as the ethnic studies requirement. Additionally, we are exploring the addition of AP African-American history with college board. We are in the process of identifying teachers that are willing to teach the program. This course will also satisfy the, satisfy the ethnic studies requirement. Master schedules should be dynamic, subject to change based on student needs. They should be flexible enough to accommodate new learning pathways for career and college-bound students while also supporting remediation programs for struggling learners. They should allow for a wide variety of learning levels within each classroom so all children receive an equal shot at achieving success. Our goal in San Bernardino City Unified is to use Our goal in San Bernardino City Unified is to use the scheduling process to make educational opportunities for all students. We are exploring partnerships that can help us review course offerings, analyze staffing patterns, and establish inclusive scheduling processes. And this is our last academic priority, reducing DNF, again a board priority. Due to the support of the board, we started addressing the DNFs five years ago. COVID set us back in our initiative to reduce DNFs. We have hired Dr. Reeves and his team with the support of the board to work individually with the high school sites to address these practices based on the school context. We will be bringing you a detailed board presentation on the DNF in our efforts in our district in our next board meeting. So I will pause your first question as I'm done with section one.
Thank you, Dr. Vennecatessen, and boy, I had like three lights come on at once. Vice President Tillman, did you get the order on that? All right, so Vice President Tillman, go ahead.
You mentioned a three-tiered graduation. What are the three tiers?
One is for the A through G completion, that's tier one, and the other one is for the alternate schools. And then the third one will be a waiver process for students that are coming from the outside, and then they are not able to meet all the requirements within the given frame of time.
What does that mean?
So if they are not able to, if they don't have enough time to meet all the A through G requirements, and they are coming in late and joining our school, there should be a way out, making sure that they graduate. So there is a pathway where there is a waiver process that we could use, that we used similarly for COVID, and we could use that to, you know, make sure that the students, no student is falling through the loop.
And, you know, for me, I'm assuming that we're all on the same page. Whatever we do, even with the A through G, we're doing it in a way where the graduation rate is going to increase, right?
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
So what's the minimum requirements in California needed to, minimum number of units in California to graduate with a diploma?
I think it is 180 credits.
And we require how many?
Right now, we require 220.
And all of them are going to require the 220, right?
Correct. Our graduation is 220.
Right. And for me, and I know this is not in this, and we never had this discussion before, but I really think that we should have the potential to have a diploma with less units. And I say that for not, not, because all students are going to go on to college immediately, and graduating from high school gives them a lot of opportunity. So if I have a student that's 18, 19 years old and has 180 units, I'd rather see them graduate with a high school diploma than not. If their goal is to go into the military or qualify for some other, you know, job, I think we should make as many options as possible.
Yes.
Maybe even have another diploma for the students who, you know, satisfy the A through G requirement. I just want to make sure I'm clear on this, because we know all of our students do not go on to college, or not only that, A through G is for a four-year school.
Correct.
So all of our students do not go to a four-year school. Some will go to a junior college.
Correct.
But it's a whole lot better to go on to a junior college with a diploma than to not go on without a diploma at all. So as long as you guys design it in a way where we're not going to exclude people at the expense of saying, we got A through G, but now a whole lot of kids aren't graduating because we don't have the capacity to do it. That's my only concern, but that's where the practicality comes in.
Yes.
Because there's so much that a student can do once they graduate our high school with a diploma, that they can't do if they don't have a diploma.
Correct.
So when we talk about tiers, maybe we'll do it a four-tiered system, because I really think we need to do something that's going to encapsulate as many kids as possible.
Absolutely. Right now, even right now, we have, because of COVID, we have a waiver system where if you meet the state graduation requirement, which is the, which is the minimum that is needed, a student will be able to graduate from our district.
One of them.
So we want to make sure that there is no student that is dropped, and then we are not seeing any dropouts in our system.
Exactly. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Mr. Solis Medina?
No, thank you for that explanation, and, you know, and I know that as board members, I know with me, I want, I would want to see A through G as part of the graduation requirements. And I think we even had a discussion that it was, it was just a language was the missing factor in, in order to move our district in that direction. But I do agree with Mr. Tillman when it comes to not decreasing the high school graduation and providing those opportunities. And I like that you have those waivers or opt-out opportunities for those students. That way, they can still be successful by graduating high school, even if they're not meeting the A through Gs. And I know a big factor in that is also the DNFs and addressing that. And I'm glad you have that as part of your presentation and how we're going to have that part of the discussion, is making sure those students are meeting, you know, meeting all of the requirements in that aspect. I'm really excited, and actually I had it part of my, my talking points for my board comments, but I think this is perfect with regards to ethnic studies. AP African-American Studies, I know other states unfortunately are removing it, but what's their loss is our gain in regards to how we can bring that within our school district and ensuring more students are participating. And then even looking at, when you're looking at the studies, there's Chicano Studies, there's so many cultural studies. There's so many aspects we can include and educate our students. So I'm really excited. I really, just the word African-American Studies, AP, I am all for it. So whatever we can do that you need my support, I'm here for that as well. And so that's just, that's just really exciting to me. I think I had another piece, just making sure the A through Gs. I know that's probably going to be coming up later on when it comes to policy. We need to be crafty on how we look at it and making sure that we're not decreasing the high school graduation and supporting our students. So, no, I'm really excited. Thank you for the presentation.
And that's not the intention at all. Our goal is also to absolutely not have any dropouts by creating a policy.
Yes, I'm glad. Thank you.
That's not the intention at all.
Yeah, no, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solis Medina. Ms. Chuhusky? Oh wait, oop, am I wrong? Ms. Savios? All right, flip a coin. I'm just kidding. Ms. Savios?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of comments. So just kind of to go back a little bit on the whole A through G conversation. So I remember when Dr. Esquivel was here, you know, that was something that the, the subcommittee policy was working on, trying to make some of those alignments. Because currently, we have two different paths. We have a path for students that are A through G that can graduate, and then we have the regular minimum, not California standards, but minimum SBCUSD graduation standards that does not include A through G completion. And so for me personally, I would like for us to align those two a little bit better. However, I do hear Mr. Tillman's concerns, right? And the concerns come about that not only are students, not all students are interested in attending college. That, to me, is not the main concern. The main concern for me is that not all students are at the level that they need to be to be able to complete A through G college courses. And that right there is the bigger concern for me. So instead of lowering the bar and lowering the expectations and saying, well, not all students want to go to college, so why don't we create the separate pathway for them? The reality of the matter is, students don't know what they, what they want oftentimes, especially at that age. And, and my real concern is when we start making separate paths for students. It's not the students who end up deciding what path they want to go into. It's often the adults out of our convenience. And I'm just being very honest and transparent. If I have a student that is so far below at their regular skill level or, you know, two, three, four grades levels behind, it's easier for me as the educator to then put him on this path or put her on this path because I'm not going to be able to fulfill, bring him up or her up where they need to be to be able to meet that A through G requirement. So it begs the question of where are we going off with these students? We need to go back at lower levels, elementary, middle school, and really focus on those deficits and those skills so that by the time that they do reach high school, that's not an issue. And then they can truly choose what they want to do. Whether they, they don't want to go to college, hey, but now it's your choice because at least you can go. Now you're truly making that choice. You have the opportunity to go. That choice was not made by us for you. A lot of times also, students say they don't want to go to college, not because they don't want to go to college, but because they don't feel good enough to be able to go to college. I can't succeed in high school. How am I going to succeed in college? So to me, I hear the concerns, but I think that focusing on that alone is not addressing the real issue. We need to be able to go back and ensure that these students have the skills and abilities so that they do, and for us to be able to align those for them, and then they can truly choose whatever they want to do. Anyway, I'll get my, off my soap opera on that. I have another question that's specifically on the ethnic studies literature portion. You describe a grade 11. So did I understand correctly? Are you saying that they'll take ethnic studies as an English class?
Yes.
Okay, that's also another concern that I have, based on the information that I just provided. So if our students are so behind already, I'm afraid and I'm concerned that taking away the teacher's main focus, which is literacy, on students that are already behind in such an important subject, which is literacy, will just exacerbate that. So that's just food for thought, you know, something to kind of consider. That's a concern that comes up. Also, in terms of, you know, DNFs, I know you're going to come back and present, so maybe I'll just wait for that for next presentation to bring my questions up.
So, and ELA that I'm, I mentioned here, there is also a regular ELA path that is being offered. It's not being replaced. So if the students, if ethnic studies is going to be a graduation requirement, so we are embedding, the standards are not going to be compromised. The ELA standards are not going to be compromised, but the principles of ethnic studies in how they choose the novels or how they address this is going to be embedded into the curriculum. And we are working with some experts on this. So the, because if we compromise the ELA standards, they won't get the A through G credit for that. So we have to be very careful that we don't compromise those ELA standards.
And I appreciate that. Again, the only concern is that I feel like sometimes teachers are already having a hard time meeting the standards.
I hear what you're saying.
For their regular ELA courses and kind of adding another layer to, to then that class itself. I'm just concerned. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Savios. Mr. Chuhusky?
Thank you. I'm going to go first to the ethnic studies. I'm excited with the three options because it lets the students choose how they want to meet that requirement, whether they want to meet it through that social justice lens as an elective, whether they want to meet it through their history class and look at ethnic studies through race and gender, right? If I understand through,
Yes.
through US history, like how race and gender has impacted US history and how, and how the accomplishments and, you know, the things. So I like that as well. And then my understanding, if I am correct, is if they choose to do the ethnic studies literature class, it's basically your ELA class, but the, the students will choose, or the teachers will use novels that are, race and gender by authors of color or,
The spirit of the ethnic studies would be involved.
In the novels that are chosen.
And we can bring you the syllabus just for you to take a look at.
I'm like, I want to go back and take that class because I think that'd be kind of cool.
We can bring you the syllabus so you can have a look at what it is. So it's, it's done by the teachers. It is the teacher committees that are actually working along with our partners. And it is actually the teachers that are creating the curriculum, and they are the experts in teaching those things. So they are the ones that are trying to bridge those two to create the curriculum.
Want to go back to San Bernardino High School and be able to take all three of those classes. Moving back to the A to G, because I think we all are kind of in that same place of how do we ensure that, that, you know, every child who wants to, every student who wants to access A to G is prepared and ready coming into high school? So that's one piece that, that is like, that we, I don't think we've, at least not here. You know, we haven't really talked about that articulation of, of that middle school readiness to access A to G. And that also, how are we having the conversations with them either end of eighth grade, very beginning of ninth grade of what is expected? Because oftentimes, the conversation happens when it's too late. Hey, you're not going to meet A to G. Do you know that, right? And then it's a little bit, you know, it's too late for them to, to, to change course or, you know, they're feeling that lack of success. So, you know, where, where is that piece in, in trying to accomplish this? I am also kind of, I had written down notes and question marks as I was kind of where Mr. Tillman was in. And I didn't see where the regular, I'll call it the regular, the non-A to G, you know, but completely okay, California-approved high school diploma was in our tier system for those kids who don't meet A to G. Because what I also don't want is kids who don't, that, you know, that go off in ninth grade and, and don't feel like they're going to meet A to G and have been told that they're not going to meet A to G to say, well, then what's the point? Right? You know, I don't want to go to an alternative school. I don't want a waiver, but you're telling me that, you know, I'm, oh, you're, you know, you're not good enough because you don't, you're off the A to G track. So I want that success, or because they already know at a very young age that they want to do something else. They're, they're more into whatever, you know, career pathway that they're in that might not be a college career. Maybe it's trade school. They know, you know, everybody in their, their family has been a union plumber, and they want to be a union plumber. You know, where, where's my pathway? So I just want to make sure that as we go through that, that some of these other things are taken into account because otherwise, I don't think we'll be successful. I think we have, there's a great plan in the tiering, but I want to make sure that the supports are there all the way along and that students know that no matter what tier they choose or what pathway. I don't even like the tiering. I'd rather say pathway than tier, because it's like, well, tier one, you're great. If you're tier two or tier three, there's a, there's a,
Not creating a system.
Yeah, it's all, it seems like you're not as good. So, you know, whatever pathway that you choose to graduation, that you know, like the game of life, there's, you know, there's no wrong way to get, get to the end of the game. You know, there's, there's just different ways to get to the end of the game, and they're all valuable.
We are only making recommendations, and I know Mrs. Applegate will bring forth, you know, the, a draft to you. And again, absolutely, it is up to the, the board, you know, to be very convinced about this is the right path and this is, like, you know, this is going to serve all the students. We still keep the rigor eye. Like, we will just follow your directions on that.
We're excited. We just want to make sure that every child has that opportunity to succeed, you know, and that they feel valued at, at wherever they are. And that, and that, you know, for every child, we can get onto the A and G pathway. Like I said, I think, I believe like Ms. Savios says, that's got to start early. It can't start in ninth grade or 10th grade. It's got to start before that because that's where they, they actually get on that pathway.
Thank you, Mr. Chuhusky. Ms. Savios, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot, and I just remembered. So I have a question about this slide here, actually. So you're saying that secondary sites have attended professional development training provided by Dr. Douglas Reeve? Is he, is he new to us? Have we worked with him before?
He has been, he is actually a pioneer in this field of grading practices. He, he works with the teachers, and he really comes from the teacher's points of view in understanding, like, you know, their efforts and how you can help them create multiple opportunities for the students. And so we have brought Dr. Reeves, and he has worked with us, and he has actually talked to all the teachers. And we have actually brought him over during our teacher professional days. And our, we saw, we started seeing, like, you know, the grades were, like, you know, improving, the DNFs were dropping, and then COVID hit, and then we were not able to continue that work. And now, the way we have shifted, since teachers and principals and all of them have heard, like, what is the principle behind what Dr. Reeves is doing, the work on DNFs? Now it is being individualized to the context, and they are putting together a leadership team in each one of their schools, and then they are creating their own action research plan, which we are going to bring the details of it in our next presentation.
Okay, and in those details, can you provide with some quantitative data?
Yes.
In terms of like the, the progress or the improvements?
Absolutely. We'll be bringing that to you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Savios. And mine's just a question of clarification on the ethnic studies board priority page. studies board priority page for 11th grade US history, race and gender. Is that a choice between the two, or is that one course?
Choice between, no, it's a choice. There is a regular US history line, sequence, as well as there is a US history.
Race and gender is a separate sequence?
The biggest focus in everything that we have done with the financial literacy or the ethnic studies or any new initiative is the student's choice and voice. Those are the two aspects that we are always keeping in mind, that is one of the reasons that are multiple options that are being developed for them. And then it is for the students who works with their counselors and the teachers and choose the right courses for them.
Choice and voice, I like it. Vice President Tillman.
Thank you all for the presentation, and I don't want to underemphasize, you know, the problem has been, we do have students with potential that should be in A through G and have it, right? So that's the problem you guys are correcting, and that's been a problem for a long time. I mean, I worked with high achieving students for a long time, and they didn't know, and their parents didn't know anything about A through G. That's never going to change, it's very technical, right? So you guys are going to institutionalize a system to make sure that the students that are there will be able to do A through G. I agree, that's the most important thing that we can do, that we don't leave out students that are right there and should have that opportunity. In the past, there've been too many that have been overlooked and not even been identified as students that should be in A through G classes. So I'm all for that, I just want to make sure we include the options for the students that are right there. You know, we're always going to have cases where, let's say we have the best system possible, and we kept everybody on track, you'll have students that come from outside the district, but they might transfer here to 11th grade. To me, we should still look at them and find ways of making them as successful as possible based on where they're at, at that moment they transfer into our district, I think that's the perfect example.
I truly understand your concern, and I know Ms. Sivios also shared, like, you know, we will never do anything in haste, and we will always be super thoughtful about how we are going to be creating these policies. The policies, our focus is not just to, the policy should never be a negative for the student, it should only add positive and more value to the student's success. So we are very, very focused on that, and I know Mrs. Applegate has been like very focused on making sure is it going to add value to any of our initiatives, only then we pursue that activity.
Perfect, and thank you all for staying this late hour.
It's not over, she still has two more sections, and it talks to our other subgroups, that's why I was hoping we could move on. You'll hear the subgroup part of that as well.
This was just one.
Great presentation, thank you, no, I'm just kidding.
So this was just one leg of the stool, so I'm going to go into the second leg. Can I go ahead? Okay. Our second leg of college and career success is college readiness efforts at San Bernardino City Unified. College readiness or college knowledge starts as early as kindergarten. We are working with elementary to create a K-12 approach on college awareness, and also Dr. Rodriguez here has been pioneering a K-12 initiative on, you know, A through G and everything about college and career success. Board, you have a folder that was given to you, and what I'm going to be talking here is about the Exhibit A and Exhibit B. It shows the samples of these plans. The first one to your left is the 80s academic plan. It's a consistent, across all the schools now, digitized four-year plan that is used in all traditional high schools to show the scope and sequences of the courses that a student would take over their four years in high school. Counselors enter the class schedules for our students electronically in this plan. Before it was handwritten, and each one of the school had their own template. So we have streamlined all that, and it is now one plan electronically input. Academic plan can be updated when the students meet with their counselor to review their academic progress. The one on the right, that's your Exhibit B, is the College and Career Success Plan, which is currently being piloted by the high school counselors. This is a comprehensive look at the student's progress in all areas of college and career readiness. This plan has much more information like pathways, transcript data, graduation data, CASP score, and all areas of student's progress. This pulls data from different parts of Ares. Counselors will use this to review a student's progress with students and their parents. And again, there are two samples in your folders for this. FAFSA and CADA, California Dream Act application. We know that this is an ask from the board to ensure all seniors file the federal aid or the California Dream Act application. District is being very proactive in pushing our seniors to file these applications. Several departments across our divisions are joining our school sites to ensure that more students complete the financial aid application than ever before. And our outreach has been done using different modalities, through electronic messaging, informational posters, workshops at school sites, et cetera. District also had their first ever FAFSA night on San Bernardino High School on February 1st, and tomorrow it will be at Sanji. Tomorrow or today? Tomorrow. We strategically sent invitations to the students that have not yet filed the applications, inviting them to these nights. So that is our last-dish effort to make sure that all the students that have still not done, we pull them into the district fair. Early college credit, again, a board priority. So dual enrollment and articulation credits, both constitute early college credits. In dual enrollment, students are enrolled in the college and high school at the same time. In the last four years, our students have taken 126 distinct valley college courses. In the last four years, 1,353 students have completed 6,563 courses, 63 courses with C or better. 112 SBC USD students completed 40 SBC USD credits to earn a dual enrollment SASH during their graduation. An articulation agreement is a formal agreement between a college and San Bernardino City Unified that guarantees classes completed at the high school, which will count for college credit at that specific college. Classes are taken at the high school and taught by our own San Bernardino City Unified teachers. 26 courses have so far been articulated. Five colleges and universities have articulation agreements with our district. 2,476 students are currently enrolled in articulated courses. Targeted support for student groups. So beyond all this that you heard, these are general supports that are offered to all our students. Other departments offer targeted supports for specific student groups. For example, Multilingual has additional three extra EL counselors to support the English learners. ETSA has designated counselors and math equity program specialists at high schools to monitor the A through G completion of our African-American students, and Special Education Department constantly, they collaborate with us to make sure how our students can increase their pathway participation. So just some examples for that. So with that, I'm done with section two or the leg two. I'm ready for questions. Go on. Okay. Now we come to the third leg as our career pathways. The Exhibit C that I have provided in the folder is the dashboard of all existing pathways in San Bernardino City Unified, and other pertinent information such as the pathways existing at high school, their linked learning certification status, college course articulation, A through G approvals, AP or IB inclusion in each pathway, AVID enrollment, and many more details. This is a living document, as the pathways moves and changes, more certification happens, we will keep updating this document. As you can see, our district has a comprehensive offering of career pathways. We offer pathways in 13 out of 15 industry sectors, recognized by the California Department of Education. We have a total of 54 pathways, out of which 25 are gold and silver certified, 10 are gold and 15 are silver. This points to the high quality and rigor existing in those pathways based on the linked learning standards. You cannot earn gold or silver certification without demonstrating the equitable access our students have to the college and career pathways. 11 more pathways are working towards silver certification. 100% of our pathway courses are A through G approved. Our board has shown tremendous support in growing the pathways at our district and has allocated millions of dollars to help them become state-of-the-art. Board, your help in providing the schools with dedicated linked learning program specialists has enhanced focus on pathways. However, upon surveying the facilities, it was apparent there are additional facility upgrades that are needed to bring many of our pathways to the industry standard. So Cabinet charged us with creating a strategic facilities plan in collaboration with the schools, teachers, and our facilities department. We will be bringing this to you for recommendation, consideration, and approval. Our pathway receives close to $10 million through grant funding, that also requires some matching funding, mostly two-to-one from the district. We are currently streamlining all grant management processes. We are working on a strategic workplace, work-based learning plan to increase real-world connections to the workplace. And that concludes my presentation. I know this is a lot of information. We, as a college and careers and secondary education team, are thankful for this opportunity to present before you the tremendous work that has been done under the leadership of Mrs. Applegate, and also the support of the, the ongoing support of the board to make sure all our students are college and career ready. I would be remiss if I don't acknowledge the hard work and collaboration from the interdepartmental team that made all these efforts possible. At this time, I want to invite Ms. Barbara Pachusak, who will speak on the pathways, and after Ms. Pachusak, it will be San Andreas to present on their pathways, and you are also in for a great treat from the students, and thank you very much for your time. Any questions for me on this?
It looks like we do have three questions, Dr. Benekatessen, and it looks like Ms. Sivios has grabbed the mic, so it must have been her first, so go ahead, Ms. Sivios.
Just really quickly for my curiosity, the articulation agreements, are those classes that would transfer as elective credits to the colleges, or would they fulfill specific, like, breadth courses?
It depends on how, what courses are articulated, most of them they do transfer, but it will count towards the two years of the, you know, the two years that they can do in the community colleges. And if it is, if it is a course, we have, I think most of our course so far that we have articulated or it satisfies the elective requirement, am I correct?
Many of them are degree-app.
And they can be applied towards a degree.
Yes.
And depending upon pathways, too?
Yes.
But they would fall under the elective section? Not necessarily, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sivios, and I do apologize who was next, well, right now, we'll just, Ms. Sivios Medina, go ahead, and then Ms. Alexander.
Well, I was, one of the questions was actually pertaining to special ed, and then making sure, but I know they're going to be speaking, so I can wait, that way I can ask all the questions after you all speak.
Well, good evening. Is the next?
Oh, this is your slide?
No, that one, right there. The College and Career Department is one of the most important departments, if not the most important in any district, as we prepare students for their futures. Bringing it under secondary has brought on perfect alignment of all domains of college and career success. Career pathways and CTE classes create opportunities for cross-curricular, hands-on, project-based learning skills. These are opportunities for students to meaningfully apply their core classroom learning in math, language arts, and science. Currently, CTE classes and pathways are expanding to middle schools and reaching the elementary with STEAM academies. The beauty of CTE and college and career is that they mesh well with UDL and help to reach not a targeted group, but all of our students. As we are expanding programs across the district, we need to ensure that our facilities are not an afterthought. We want to create first-class learning environments where our students are prepared with 21st-century skills to afford them competitive advantages to succeed. And now you'll hear from Doris Stratton.
As San Andreas High School principal, I am proud to announce that San Andreas will be announced next week as the first alternative high school across the United States to be linked learning gold certified. The gold certification standards are very rigorous and require us to show an integrated program of study with work-based learning along with student supports. We have blazed the trail to show other alternative high schools that while getting this distinction is in no way an easy task, it is achievable with a staff that has a desire, drive, and heart, and a district office that helps remove barriers, and a board that values all of our students. Next, Bertie Figaroa, Roberta Figaroa, will be speaking to you. She is our new linked learning program specialist, she is one of the ones that you actually helped fund, so this is her first official year out of the classroom. We're doing great things, and we'll continue to go, do great things under her leadership, thank you.
Good evening. Five or six years ago, starting career pathways at a continuation high school was just a dream of this ambitious team. We came to you several times, this board, and we asked for money over and over again. And many people kept asking, why are you always asking for money, and the other schools aren't asking for money? And back then, we didn't qualify for the career state funding back then, most continuation high schools do not. And so we had to meet certain requirements. You made that investment in us, and it is now paying off, and I want to thank you. Thank you for believing in us. And so now, we qualified last year for state funding, and we now, as you have heard, we now have gold certification. And this rigorous evaluation has lots of components, and I'm going to go through them briefly. We do have two career pathways at San Andreas, I know you all know about our business and technology pathway, but we also have a health science pathway. If you take a look up there, we have the three standards, integrated program of study, work-based learning, and student supports. Our business and technology pathway, and this is at a continuation high school, let me remind you, is A through G, rigorous, and we have a CTE sequence with leadership standards. We also have articulated CTE classes and college units. Most articulated courses in our district are through CTE. And a lot of them, again, like for instance, medical terminology is an articulated course, so that is a very rigorous course, and our students are earning those college units before they graduate. If you take a look below that, soft skills and industry skills learned while operating a student-run business, a lot of people say that San Andreas has a garden. We don't have a garden, we have a, we have the largest school-run greenhouse on the West Coast, and we have a very high-technology hydroponics lab, and we, our students produce produce and we sell to local businesses. And our pathway was built around special education. Our special education program runs it and trains our regular education students. SEL and project-based. SEL and project-based learning is empowered in these pathways, and we had to prove this to the Link Learning Alliance to get our gold certification. Now, moving on to our health science pathway, it is also A through G, and it has a three-hundred-hour course sequence, and that's what we offer to our students. We have not only articulated courses, but we also offer dual enrollment, so that's where college professors come on campus and can teach classes, or students can do it virtually. Our students are earning industry certifications such as basic life support through American Heart Association, first aid, and OSHA certifications. Our industry partners, they teach our students and they evaluate our students. The pathway was built around credit-deficient students at San Andreas. We leave all options on the table. And then, we do this with a growth mindset and tiered interventions. So, many, many people may say that students failed out of traditional high school, and we don't see it as a failure, we see it as a trial, and now they're off to their next effort here at San Andreas. So, what I would like to say is, we are about to present a video, right? And so hopefully you can see all of this. And before we show that video, I just wanna thank you once again for believing in us. Thank you.
The past two years, I've seen our child develop. Amazing.
The fact that this program has helped her overcome a little bit of her disability is awesome for us. You know, she's paying more attention to details, and one of her biggest disabilities is her attention span.
We go to the grocery store, she's all talking about vegetables, and she's gonna make me this salad, and sometimes she's talking about plants that I don't even know about.
It's not just only about the plants, but they have responsibilities, there are steps for them to follow, and out in the world, there are steps you have to follow as well. So this is what this class is teaching them.
It taught me a bunch of different ways on how to look on life and how to do stuff in life. It helped me a lot having good teachers, and the teachers made me want to learn.
They're teaching you how to be independent and learning how to work with other people, helping you to like get a job after the program, you know? The first time I started here, like, I was really shy, like, sometimes I didn't even wanna come to school, but like this year, like, I wanna learn everything. The program helped me a lot.
The fact also that the kids go off campus to distribute their vegetables, that's really exciting. For my kid, it is, like, she loves it. They feel like they're part of something, and then I just treat it differently because of their disabilities.
It catches their interest, and I think that's the main focus on anybody that's ADHD, is find something that they're gonna end up liking, because it's new things all the time.
And for the health, I think the biggest one is probably like CPR. It showed me like if my baby brother needs help or something's wrong with him, I could do the CPR. Honestly, that's a big thing, because if someone does it wrong, it can hurt the person.
At my old school, I was not doing really good. I was fighting, I was not coming to school, I was always in the office, my mom was there every single day signing for suspension or something. Now that I have came to San Andreas, it's helped me a lot. I put myself out there to the teachers, saying I need help, I'm asking for help, they helped me.
It's a good program. Invest in the program, see the successes in the program.
It's putting me out there to see better and bigger things.
All right, way to, way to end it on that great video. And I don't know if our new colleagues, if they've been over there yet, but if you haven't, it's a very, it's an unbelievable program, really is. Talk about high-tech, it's at the highest level, and, you know, if you haven't had their product, it's a great product as well. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Oh, thank you, that's why I thought it was necessary for me to wait, because it is an all-inclusive program, and the, and it's about opportunities, providing everyone an opportunity to succeed. And even with my own child, you know, being, had it not been for my advocacy, they wouldn't be where they're at today. And, and I think it's important for us as educators, as, as school sites, to look at opportunities for our students. Doesn't matter if they may need extra help in a certain area, but they excel in other areas, and I think those are the gifts that we need to focus on, and you're providing those opportunities, amazing. Thank you so much for sharing. I would love for this video and, to be placed on all our social media, maybe on our website as well, so that way others can see the great things we're doing. And I am also glad you mentioned with regards to, in the beginning, there was no funding, and how the obstacles our alternative schools face because, you know, no one really takes, you know, looks at, you know, these are some of the struggles, we need, we need that funding in order to start. And now that you're able to receive that at the state level, so congratulations for your push and effort, and I know all of you had been advocating, I haven't been to your site yet with regards to the programs, but I definitely want to go and, and visit, and I'm excited, I'm really excited. So with that, I do want to look at others, you know, when, when it comes to our, our students with different needs or, or extra needs, how are we not losing them within other school sites? Because, you know, although they're great, they're doing great things there at, at your sites, what are we doing to ensure this is also being implemented maybe at a different level at our other sites? Because, like I said, had, had it not been for my advocacy work, my son would be in a different place now. And I think, I'm just glad that the district was able to push for that. So I don't know if that's some of the conversations you're having, I'm sure they are, when it comes to special needs?
Pacific also has the catering pathway, which is completely focused on, you know, to support special education students, and the other San Bernardino High School is also thinking about how they can open a pathway that could actually support all the students. So that, that process, I think they are the starters, and when they saw that it works in San Andreas, I know everybody is now like looking at, how do you provide those options to everybody?
All high schools, so definitely, and then also not forgetting that-
Can I expand on that just really quickly? It's, it is great, because one of the things that we like when we're focusing on San Andreas, it's not just to say, you know, this is one. We like, we, our mantra there is that we don't mind being the first, we just don't wanna be the only. I mean, we are the first in a lot of things, but we're not the only. And so I did work closely with the teachers over at Pacific High School, they were very interested. It started during COVID, and we had a bunch of meetings, and then we had another teacher who was willing to follow through in a CTE pathway. And we have been supporting teachers throughout the district by offering help and assistance to be able to help them create and, and duplicate a pathway that works for them over there. So it, we definitely wanna be able to expand that, that's part of the highlight.
Awesome, thank you so much for sharing that. No, no, perfect. And then also making sure that students are able to also meet the A through Gs. I know there, there's, they may need extra support in one area, but they may excel in math, they may excel in science, and so making sure we provide those opportunities. I was also gonna ask with regards to Avid. I know middle, college, high school has a huge emphasis when it goes to career pathways or their dual enrollment, college access, and so forth. Are we looking, is Avid also looking at how they can expand, or is this something that has been part of the conversations? Because they do help students with that application process and all the other stuff that you were talking about.
We are actually one of the districts, and I know the board has supported the Avid expansion at secondary as well as elementary in a huge way. When you really look at, one of the things that you can get data from is that pathway dashboard, that it has also the Avid numbers, how many of the students who are in the pathways. And it is not just necessarily restricted with that, there are also students, there are many more students, which we will bring you the data next time. I, I honestly dropped the slide there, and I, for sake of time, I had to condense a lot of information, and I knew this was already a lot of information that I'm providing, so I should have done that Avid slide there.
Oh, okay, but it's, so it was, so it is on your radar.
It is, it is really taken off very well in all of our high schools and our, and many, there are seven-to-one ratios in terms of the tutoring services that are available, and it has supported, schools are getting a lot of resources in order to get, in order to expand Avid.
Thank you so much.
It's pretty robust in, in secondary schools, and, and I know in many schools now, Amy, my counterpart is really working on expanding it in elementary, too.
Yes, and I know I was one of the first board members I pushed in elementary.
I remember that five years ago.
Yes, it was, it was a huge push, and I'm glad we're moving in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina, Ms. Chuhusky.
That was a wonderful way to end, thank you very much to my friends and colleagues at San Andreas. The thing I like the most about what you guys are doing there is it's, a lot of people say that, you know, the, see the cans, and that it would be too hard, or these, you know, oh, not with those kids, and, and you have shown, you know, better than anybody, and I know a lot of schools and school districts, you know, what is possible. I appreciate, I've, I've been able to see both programs, thank you very much, and I love coming over there to see them, because it's just so exciting, and the kids are so excited to talk about their, their experiences. And I know you guys are, I mean, it's just the beginning, I know this is not the end of what you guys are going to accomplish, and I, I can't wait to hear like, you know, what expansion and ideas that you guys have for moving forward. And I appreciate hearing, because one of my questions was, how do we help other schools, you know, achieve what you have? Because, you know, it's, it's not easy to get going, and I know this is, this is something that's been, the hope has been growing for a long time, right? And so, you know, looking at, you know, starting and how you guys are gonna help support others, I really appreciate that you're doing that. I also, you know, going back to the conversation earlier, seeing the A to G within, you know, the pathway, and understanding that, oh my gosh, even San Andreas can do A to G, because I think a lot of times they're like, well, if they're at continuation or alternative schools, then A to G is off the table. And so seeing that as part of the presentation, given the earlier conversation, is also something that I appreciate. And I just wanna, you know, thank you for being here late tonight, because I know you have kids early tomorrow morning, and, or students, I'm sorry, I still, they're all my babies, so, but students tomorrow morning, and I just wanna just say kudos, because you guys have done an amazing, amazing job, and I really appreciate, you know, your staff and your leadership.
Thank you, Ms. Chuhusky, Ms. Marion Gundy.
Congratulations, I mean, you're amazing, and San Andreas is always close to my heart. My youngest did graduate from there and went on to be a very successful adult, and I'm very proud of her time. She also worked at Anderson School with me for a while, right, when she finally graduated from San Andreas. I, I know that you hope that you're not the only one, and my twenty years at Anderson, no one ever listened to me when I'd say that would be a perfect place, a school, to, to have what you have over there, but that was then, this is now. But I invite you to take a look around there and see if you see that, because they have the space and the grounds and the people, they have everything there, so just putting that in there. And also to ask you if you foresee a time when we could use those vegetables in our own schools and, and provide that for our students. I've seen that done on television, and, and they have salad bars and with fresh foods, and children discover salad, correct?
Yes, so as a matter of fact, we're already working with our own nutrition services, developing a contract, and we are, again, the first K through twelve internationally that are Primeis certified, which means that anything that has to do with global food safety, that is the highest achievement that you can get. And like I said, we set the bar for other schools to be able to meet, too, at this point. But yes, so we can sell to nutrition services, we currently sell to restaurants and other, other venues, so thank you.
All righty, Ms. Alexander.
I'd like to first say congratulations. You guys, your program is awesome. I look forward to being able to visit it. I've shared with you, I have visited Pacific High, their catering pathways program, and definitely what you've shared about your program in that video speaks volumes. I hope it serves also as an inspiration to other schools within our district. And then, I'm also a data person, so are you capturing your success, and are you seeing the differences in your students and where they're matriculating and where they're going?
So one of the things when we first started our pathways, officially started our pathways, I think last year we had, or two years ago, we had one pathway completer, and last year we had twenty-
Seven?
Twenty-four. Twenty-four pathway completers. One of the things is, one of the students you saw highlighted on the video is Destiny. So she is actually still currently in school, although she could have graduated two blocks ago. She, so she actually, we've had many, 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 many students choose this year to actually stay with us, six weeks or twelve weeks more, and the reason why is because of the way that Bertie has really launched our pathways for them. We're offering different incentives, like where they, during graduation, they're gonna get to wear sashes, and they earn different cords, so when they, part of our health pathway is running our, our blood drives, and when they, they donate blood, so they actually get a red cord when they're, they've donated blood so many times. And so they really see their, their, their progress when they're with us, and, and our teachers move along with the students to show them how they're progressing. So we actually do have several students that are gonna be double pathway completers this year, and, and Destiny is, was one of our challenging students last year, she'll tell you that, and has completely one-hundred percent turned it around. She's amazing, and she's one of their leaders with our career pathway clubs, and she's a leader on campus. So it's just been amazing the way our students have grown, so part of that is the data, like you were saying, we're really trying to pull that together to, to, to see the growth that our students are having.
I just wanted to add a little bit about data, because we just went through the gold certification, so we had to come up with data. We, I don't know if you know this, but San Andreas generally has about five hundred students that attend at one time, and again, we have students that come in and out every six weeks, and we graduate as many students or more than Pacific High School and San Bernardino High School. So that's something that we celebrate. Another thing is we have a ninety-eight percent positive transition rate, which means that our students either transfer back positively or graduate. That's very, that's a very good score if you take a look at other continuation high schools, it's also on the, well, soon to be on the dashboard, okay? So, and I know Barbara wants to say something, so.
Okay, the, the thing is, we probably could talk all night on this, because we're very proud of what we do, and we're very, very passionate about it, and like I said, we share with other people, so we like to celebrate that. But also, one of the things to bring up, too, is that we have a number of students who participate in internships, and we have some paid internships, and then some volunteer interns as well, and students are getting an opportunity to be able to work with other members in the community, and they're building some of those soft skills along the way, and those are important for the students, too. And the attendance approves with the students, along with the, you know, the interest in actually, in, in the program and in the classes. And that's what college and career happens to do for us, you know, with this opportunity, with, with, in this district, I think we have some phenomenal pathways in this district. And all of those, we want to be able to expand and have the same opportunities all the way around, so thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Alexander, I'd like to present to Tillman.
A great presentation and just amazing work you're all doing. You know, during this last campaign season, I went to somebody's event, and a gentleman made this comment that San Bernardino was a rudderless ship, and, I mean, I just sucked it up, wanted to cuss him out, mightn't say anything, but I know all the great things you guys are doing out there, and there's so many stereotypes, but when you visit the sites and the programs, and you see it, and you see the kids, if you don't go on the campus, you will never know, because we hear so much negativity, and what you all do is just amazing, and you, you never get the credit that you deserve. I say to my new board members, you know, it was Mike Gall that championed the, I don't call it the garden, you gotta get mad at me, but Hydro, whatever it is, I mean, we spent millions of dollars there, and he would call me, hey, Danny, this is gonna be great, and to tell you the truth, I didn't really understand the concept, but I supported him. And he championed it, and he wanted to, wanted to see it to fruition, and he, and we were able to do it, and it is, I mean, all you guys' vision was just wonderful. So I, I've, I've been there a number of times, we can do more, and I'm glad you mentioned the money, because money makes a difference. The people that talk about, you know, you're throwing money at a problem, no you're not. You have to make the investments, and it pays off, and it benefits our kids, and so I can't thank you all enough, and we had San Bernardino- And so, I can't thank you all enough. And we had San Bernardino High School up here before. And we had Aurora Valley, Cajon, all the schools that wanted to come here and tell us Indian Springs about their pathways because you're doing such a good job. But I think it's great because you just see the light go off with the students that are involved. That's the part I love about it. The students buy into it. They get hyped up. And they learn so much just by being engaged. Even the stuff that Ms. Ben Wall does over at Norton and the robotics and that kind of stuff is just great. So, to all you, great presentation. And thank you for the work that you do. It's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Vios?
Just really quickly, again, congratulations. You know, seeing this and seeing, you know, this with this group of students just really brings me a whole lot of joy. It really, really does because, you know, oftentimes, these are the students that, you know, people tend to kind of lose hope on. I did not go to a continuation school in the district, but I actually went to a similar type of school. So, I graduated from... A lot of people say Aurora Valley. I actually did not graduate from Aurora Valley. I attended Aurora Valley the first year and I was so far behind and ended up dropping out. Long story short, I went to Job Corps in Muskoy. And again, similar type of student population, like Ms. Abiles Grande just said. You know, her daughter graduated from San Andreas and she, you know, grew up to be a very successful young lady. I consider myself a very successful young lady as well. Young. Again, you know, congratulations. It really excites me to see this kind... You guys are doing it against the odds. And so, congratulations. You're, you know, combining rigorous academics with a real-world experience, which is making that connection for these students and really for any student. A lot of times, they get bored in the classroom. And so, you guys are bringing it to life. You're capturing their curiosity and you're engaging them in a way that shows. So, you know, again, congratulations and just keep doing what you're doing and however we can support. Let's... I would like to see it replicated across the district. I know all high schools, if I'm not mistaken, have pathways. But not all students in those high schools necessarily are in the pathways or, you know... So, for us to take a closer look and say, okay, how can we have all students be in those pathways? I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vios. And my colleagues have said pretty much all of it. But thank you again for a very comprehensive presentation. I really, really do like the College and Career Success Plan that you have put together here. I think, wow, that makes it really easy for us, right? For our students, for our counselors. I would say continue to push to be innovative, right? I think that's really what separates us from other programs when it comes to our college and career pathways. You know, if it's something that you believe we should look into and you need the resources, bring it to our attention. You know, Ms. Tillman, Vice President Tillman talked a little bit about Mike Gallo. And, you know, he's one of the main reasons why I'm here. And he knew I also loved CTE and Career Tech Ed and ROP and all that good stuff. We called it shop classes back in the day. Well, we had no shop classes. I even came close to the level that we have now in our schools. And Mr. Tillman is absolutely right. The programs we have, I don't think we get enough credit for them. I really don't. I gave a public presentation today to Rotary Club and I talked about our pathways and just what they do for our students and the level it takes them to. I use my son as an example all the time. You know, when he interviewed with San Diego State University for a cybersecurity program, they asked him, "How do you know so much about cybersecurity?" They were absolutely blown away because he is blowing away adults in the interview panels. So, I said, "It's because of what our schools do." So, I challenge us all to continue to be innovative, to look at the future, obviously, and what the needs are. Because as those of you who know Career Tech Ed, we don't even know what those jobs are in five years. So, how do we prepare them for that? And then, you know, I challenge our board and our new leadership as well, our superintendent. We have to prepare our kids for jobs that we don't even know exist yet. So, that is our challenge. That is our challenge as a district, as a board, as, you know, an incredible organization that pushes and strives for innovation. So, please, please continue. And I love seeing our students at San Andreas, our students with disabilities. Our students have been in a lot of trouble, you know? I got a lot of trouble. But I was often bored. I was definitely bored. Our kids don't look bored on there. And if you haven't been there, you gotta get over there. Because I went over there and I didn't know what to expect. You know, Danny makes me laugh because he called it the greenhouse, right? I thought the same thing. I got over there, I was like, what the heck is Mike talking about? You know, Mike Gallo, this program he keeps just wanting to do. When I got over there, I was like, wow, this is the real deal. I know for sure. I know for sure that's why. I'm surprised you even have hardly any suspensions because when kids are engaged and they're on task and they love going to school, which we saw with a lot of our students, their testimonies, the rest is easy, right? We just have to teach them now. So, great job, Dr. Venkatesan, Assistant Superintendent Applegate and everybody here. And again, thank you for staying up late with us, so.
Dr. Wyatt, I do want to thank the team, Dr. Venkatesan and her team and Ed Services, our site team. We are... They're doing a tremendous amount of work. It's a huge lift, as you can see. We streamlined... We used to have a 95% graduation rate and less than 30% A to G. Our graduation rate, I'm proud to say, is back up to 90%. So, you're going to start seeing those metrics move. And all the tiers that Dr. Venkatesan talked about are all about access. We want every single one of our students to have access to graduation, whether it's the A through G route or the other route. Everything that these wonderful people have done are really focused on all of our kids being successful and being engaged. So, thank you, board, and thank you to our team. Go home. I know we have an early morning tomorrow. Thank you very, very much for everything.
Thank you, Ms. Applegate. And I say, one of the best compliments is when people want to flatter you is when they replicate what you do. And I'm going to take this plan with me. Trust me, I'm like, wow, this is good. Really, really good. Thank you, folks. And almost good morning as well. We're going to get to that morning, trust me. We are. We're going to move on to 9.0, reports by unit organizations. And we'll start with San Bernardino Teachers Association, President Akala. I did ask Mr. Tillman. He said they're going to have to wait. So, I'm just kidding.
We had postponed this presentation.
We had postponed this presentation.
So many times, I didn't feel right saying we're going to postpone it.
So, thank you for hanging in there with us, President Akala. And almost good morning to you, too, so.
I think we're five minutes away from morning. Good evening, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, Administrator in Charge, Dr. Funchess, members of the Board and Cabinet. I'm Ashley Bidasalcala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. First, I'd like to officially congratulate and welcome our new board member, Mrs. Felicia Alexander. Welcome. And also, he's no longer here, but our newly appointed superintendent, Mr. Mauricio Ariano. We have been successful as a district because of collaborative leadership modeled from our superintendent on down. And SBT A looks forward to continuing our work together with the board, superintendent, our cabinet, on behalf of our members. I also would like to let the board know tonight that we have a newly certified National Board teacher in our district. At Curtis Middle School, we have a CTE teacher, Amy Aguaray, who was certified in December. And we want to congratulate her on this amazing accomplishment. And hopefully, we'll be recognizing her at a future board meeting. It was also exciting, too, even though it's a late hour, to hear this presentation about college and career pathways in our district and the progress that we've been making to provide these opportunities for our students. And as an association, we look forward to being a key partner as we continue to move this work forward to ensure that our educators have state-of-the-art teaching and learning environments to prepare our students for the workforce and their futures. There is one issue that I do want to bring to your attention this evening, and it affects our speech and language pathologists. Many of them were here earlier this evening. We have been working over many years to try to reduce the undue burden of caseloads for our SLPs. And it just continues to be a perpetual issue. We have been meeting with Dr. Funchess and Mrs. Applegate. And we are hopeful that under their leadership, that we can finally come to a collaborative agreement that will provide a permanent solution to this issue. And if we are successful, then it's our students who'll be able to thrive. Because if we lower the caseloads, then we provide time for our SLPs to be able to meet the needs of our students who are on AEPs, who need that therapy in order to help them exit from speech therapy and go on to continue to be successful. And lastly, tonight, I want to take a moment to recognize our school counselors. This is National School Counseling Week. And we want to say thank you to our amazing school counselors who go above and beyond to support our students and well as our staff and our school community. Thank you for your time this evening. And I think it's still evening.
You made it, President Akala. Thank you. All right. 9.2, California School Employee Association?
No report.
All right. 9.3, Communication Workers of America?
No report.
9.4, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association?
No report.
All right. Moving on to 10.0, Reports and Comments. 10.1, Board Members. And we are starting with Ms. Abiles Grande. How come you had your light on already? Did you know? Did you know it was going to be you?
I just do it just in case it is.
Well, this I inform, Ms. Board Member Alexander, we do have an order because sometimes people like to go left to right, right to left, start in the middle. So, Ms. Cunningham over there keeps a tally for us on who was the last and who gets to go first. And it happens to be you, just by chance.
Thank you. Okay. I just have a couple of things. First of all, I do want to say thank you to all of our viewers who stayed up all night long to watch us. I just want you to know that we feel you out there. And a special shout-out to Martha from Nawa because I know she never misses a show. And I'm really grateful for her and her viewership. And I also thank everyone in the community and teachers and people who send me texts all the time about things. And I always say, "Thank you." Remember, I am one person, but I appreciate everything you say and I will pass it on. Okay? So, that said, there's something real important that was, you know, brought to my attention. And I just asked my fellow colleagues about it. And so, they told me where I can mention it. And that was, why do we give our staff who've been here 20 years, 35 years and 40 years, we recognize them with an award at the end of the year, but we don't have one for 30? So, there is none for 30. So, this has been going on for a long, long time. And it was brought to my attention tonight by none other than our Jamie Rios, who is one of the most dedicated people. He just loves what he does, working with the students at San Bernardino High School, putting on the beauty pageants and stuff. So, he's just so sad. And he says, "I'm retiring this year at 30 and I'm not going to get an award." And I said, "Well, I'm just one person, but I will bring it to my colleagues' attention." And I bet that, you know, we start now, I bet we could have something ready by the end of the year. I'm just... I have faith. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abiles Grande. And I am confident we could get that done. Confident. Vice President Tillman?
And I agree. And I know you're looking for consensus. It probably can get done without having to agendaise. But this pin that I wear is the 40-year pin from the county. And we get a pin every five years. So, it starts with one ruby and then a ruby and a diamond and then two rubies and a diamond. So, and you get one for 30 years. So, I think it's a great idea. And I know Dr. Funchess can take care of it and bring it back so that we can have a 30-year...
Just to let you know, Ginger and her team and HR were working together right now on that. So, we don't mind taking a look at that and seeing how we can make that happen. Okay?
Perfect.
Jamie Rios, did you hear that? Yeah. Martha will tell you.
I'm going to keep it real short, but I want to welcome Ms. Alexander to the board. I think we have a fabulous board. And we're going to do great things. I know she has to drive the work, so I'm going to keep it short. Yeah. And thank you for everybody who's watching.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Vios?
Also, I will keep it short. I just absolutely love Ms. Grande, how you introduced that. And you're no longer just one board member because you have the support of the rest. But I also want to say, you know, just congratulate the counselors for their... It was on my list. Ms. Akala, you know, beat me to it. But I wanted to, you know, give a shout-out to the counselors and all the amazing work that they do. Also, I wanted to just mention, you know, and looking at the Friday update and, you know, looking at social media as well, just really proud and impressed of like the partnerships that we are, you know, engaging in with the universities, CSUSB and Riverside for, you know, recruiting and attracting and retaining, you know, teachers and staff and so forth. Also, I wanted to mention, and I had it up, but the attendance, also on that Friday update, the attendance rate on our different students, different student groups, I was really, really impressed with the just huge jumps and huge gains that we've made this year with the chronic absenteeism and also in our specific subgroups as well with their African-American and other groups. Like I said, I don't have the information right in front of me, but it's pretty substantial. So, I was really pleasantly impressed and surprised by that. And then, lastly, I just want to congratulate the Swiss Department on their $6 million grant that was awarded to them to support the implementation of the early interventions. And I know that's not going to happen, you know, we receive until the 27th. But it has been granted and awarded to them. So, congratulations to them. And I'm looking forward to the work that they do. And then, lastly, I do want to share a concern that was also brought up to my attention. And you, Dr. Wyatt, had mentioned it a little bit earlier today. When Ms. Negretti was speaking, and it's regarding the sporting events, right? It's regarding the system that the sporting events department, the athletics department utilize, where something along the lines of like they don't take cash anymore. And so, I just want to make sure that we take a look into that and ensure that we're not turning away parents or just community members in general because they can't make the purchase through the online system. You know, some of them may not have a credit card. That can be an embarrassing thing for parents or, you know, just in general, people in general. Not everybody has a credit card. Not everybody wants to use a credit card. And so, just making sure that we do allow people to pay cash if that's what they so wish to do. So, if there is a policy on that, I would like to request it so that we can amend it. And if there isn't a policy on that, then we should be allowing people to be able to, you know, pay cash. So, other than that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vios. And you're right, I agree with you. Ms. Chusky?
Thank you. And early happy Valentines, colleagues. Welcome, Ms. Alexander, to our board and to Mr. Ariano, who's already left. Or, you know, we're really happy and we're looking forward to... I'm looking forward to having this full team and working with everybody. I went to, on the 23rd, after our last meeting, I went to the Student Leadership Advisory Council. And those kids are doing some amazing work. One of the groups is working on and really looking at the implementation of the wellness centers at all of the high schools. And I'm fortunate, I'm going to be able to attend with Dr. Rodriguez and Dr. Moss. And some of our students are taking a field trip so they can see what we've already... What's in place, what we've already done. And then, they're going to, you know, be making some recommendations to us through the student leadership on where they see our wellness centers, what we need to do. And so, I'm really excited about their leadership and they're taking a role on how we do this. I want to echo Ms. Vios's comments on the entrance for athletic games. I went to Pacific High School's girls' basketball game. I went to go see one of my students, former students, Anne Jeanette, who is just... She is just becoming an all-star in just so many ways. You know, a year ago, I was really worried about her. And now, she's on the basketball team. And they sent me a picture of her from the school dance, which is something she hadn't been accessing. And I was able to talk to... And I was able to talk to the vice principal and one of her teachers, coaches, and just, you know, we were just talking, commenting about how, you know, sometimes just getting that hook, just finding that thing, that spark, that you can, you know, give to a student to connect them. And so I'm really excited about that. I'm excited to be going to the ribbon cutting for Pacific this week. And, you know, as we talk about our CTE and what we're doing with our schools. I don't know if you were able to see the video that was sent to us by Lynn Hildebrand, the students from Mr. Palito's class at Musquee, they listened to our voices. But they were adorable, and it's fabulous. And I'm hoping that we're also going to share that possibly on social media because it's really great. The lyrics were written by a class, Mrs. Waitman's class at Cypress wrote the lyrics. And then a musician from, an Australian singer, put the music to this and to the students from Cypress's. So it's two of our elementary schools collaborating, and this class is performing it. And it would even be great maybe if we could get them to come perform for us one evening, the song. Because it was really, I mean, it's about student empowerment, right? And so I just, I thought it was really great. I'm hoping that, you know, we heard tonight about the, I think it was the CIF soccer championship tomorrow? It would be nice if we could get that in the Friday updates when those kinds of things are happening so that we know in advance and can plan. You know, it's kind of hard when you hear the day before, so that we can plan to attend some of these events. Especially, I mean, you know, it's hard to get everybody's schedules for basketball games and football games and soccer games and softball. But I know a lot of us would like to support our teams, and so it would be helpful, especially if they make CIF. Also, you know, I just want to honor our school counselors as well. I've been fortunate in my career to work with some fantastic school counselors. And they do, you know, they really reach our students when they're in the greatest need. And, you know, we can't honor them enough for the work that they do with our kids. And I'm sorry that our colleagues from San Andreas are gone because I want to end. We lost another teacher from San Andreas, Ms. Dawn Bradley. She was a power at that school and a force to be reckoned with and well-loved. And it was a tragedy. She'd been away for a while, but it's still a great, a great, great loss. And so I just want to end honoring her.
Thank you, Ms. Husky. And if you'd like, maybe at the end, a moment of silence as well when we end our meeting. All righty, Ms. Alexander. You get to make your comments, your first time. You get five minutes, you don't have to use them all, though.
Five minutes, well, I did have a speech earlier. I will actually end it with, I'll keep it simple and sincere. I want to first say thank you to the board for the opportunity. I know I said it in closed session, but I really appreciate the fact that you all voted me in as your next colleague. I look forward to working with you. I also look forward to working with the staff. I've had an opportunity to work with some of them for the onboarding process. You know, just in general, just getting to know everyone that's sitting on this dais and beyond. Anyone who touches our student lives, I want to be a part of and get to know who they are. Our educators, it was good to hear the stories that we heard today. The students, the students that were here, that was amazing. And just the parents. I look forward to just making an impact on our scholars and on their families. So, and working with you. I know we're all different, but our number one priority is our scholars and their families. So my parents were here. I don't know if they'll listen, but I want to make sure that I recognize my family that was present. And my parents, I talked about the educators, Loretta and James Kuzar. And then we had our kids here with their grandchildren. So Ariana and Amber and Sydney and Simone, Spencer and Avery. Want to make sure they know that I say their names because I really appreciated them coming out. And we had a host of friends out that came out to support. I know that a lot of them kind of came down here and were taking pictures. Those are my sorority sisters of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. And I really appreciated them coming. Assistance League of San Bernardino. And also the California Black Chamber of Commerce. So we had a lot of people in the room. And I have to thank Dr. Glenn Dowdy Rogers. You know, she paved the course. I know I have two years in this seat. I appreciate her for inspirational leadership. She was here earlier, and I'm sure she's watching. And I wish her the best of luck in her newly-elected position. And last but least, not least, my husband over there, who is our only... I appreciate him for all that he does, for our family, for me. I love you, you sworn me in, so really appreciate that. So thank you for being an amazing man, and that's it. So thank you, everybody. And to all the viewers, I appreciate you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Congratulations, like, you know, with regards to the great things we're going to hear about your experience and how you can help push our district forward as well. I don't know how city council meetings work. I don't know if they've been this late. I know that in our previous times, our board meetings have ended at midnight or even one in the morning. But we're hoping that we could do better so that way we don't have to stay this late. But I'm really excited that you're on board. You know, I've always was a little worried, but you know what? After hearing that you've been doing or speaking up on certain things, it's like it's refreshing to see that you're going to be a great asset with the board as well. So other than that, yeah, no, of course. And then, other than that one, I do want to look at the photography. I know this is something that was also mentioned earlier. You know, and I think I was in that boat, too, where you couldn't necessarily afford the whole package. And you don't have to. Maybe our school sites, we have students, I was looking at the ROP, not the ROP, the CTE programs that we have at different high schools. And maybe have our own students as well do photography and take pictures. Maybe there's a grant that we could pay for, you know, programs for sites to do this. So that way, we could look at that as an opportunity where students are able to get their graduation pictures and our students also to benefit from it through their CTE programs or so forth.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. And I guess I'll wrap it up, right? And Ms. Alexander, again, congratulations and welcome. And I want you to know, this has been 14 months in the making. I've said that a few times tonight. But, you know, it is very nice to have a seven-person board now. And we do have a very diverse board, and I'm very proud of that as well. They come from all different aspects of life and bring a tremendous amount of experience and all love our kids and love our city and love our community. Councilman Alexander, I thought you were the only lone soul out there. And, you know, sometimes you just got to do what you got to do as the husband, right?
If they had a shot, so, I mean, if you could...
A second there, I thought you were the only one. I looked back and I seen Mr. Jim Cunningham all the way in the back. And I'm like, what is he doing here? You know what I mean? Oh, is that what he's there for you? Okay.
And Mr. Alexander is smiling, he's not doing like Ben Affleck.
That's funny. But now, for the two of you still in our in-presence crowd, thank you. And for those of you watching, thank you as well. And I'm hoping one of those is Superintendent Ariano because this is what you got coming, buddy. So congratulations, Superintendent Ariano, as well. And I know you're watching, I don't even have to ask. I want to say thank you to our AICs as well. And I know we've had some comments about them and, you know, what is it they do? And I want to also add that we don't just not have a superintendent, we also don't have a deputy superintendent, which we, you know, may or may not replace. But we also had another assistant superintendent position. So there is more than a lot of work that needs to be done, let alone their own job as assistant superintendent. So thank you to all of you for doing the work that you do. And, you know, I know Ginger doesn't get any credit sometimes because we only talk about the AICs. But thank you, Ginger, and thank you, Chief, as well, because you're up here. And our ladies, of course, that are here right with us, and David and Daniel, who people don't even ever see, but they are over here. One's out there and one's in the room behind where you never see them. But, you know, so they're here with us as well when we're here this late. So again, thank you all. Super excited about our future, folks. Super excited about our future. All right, Ms. Grande wants one of my minutes or maybe a minute and a half. So I'm going to have to hurry up and wrap it up real quick. So, but now, again, like I said, and I start off our board meeting today... Well, actually, today's another great day in San Bernardino. Because we started with a great day yesterday, and it's another great day today. And I will just end on that because I have no more to say. Ms. Grande?
I just want to take a minute to just tell all of you how much I am enjoying this experience. And the more I know about each and every one of you, the prouder I am that I'm one of you here. I just feel such a sense of belonging. And I really am grateful to you for making me all feel so welcome. And I'm just so happy, I really am. And Mr. Jim back there, he's my best friend at the Democratic Luncheon Club. And he invited me to Rotary today. So I'm very happy to have his friendship and support, too. And a shout out to him, thank you. Is that the right Jim? Oh, different Jim, okay, sorry. Well, Jim Smith, wherever you are, thank you.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I'm sorry, ma'am, and I had to do that.
This is a perfect, and I should pull out one of my puppets now, okay?
But on that note, and I did notice we had about a minute and 45 seconds, but they changed the clock. I will say this, I've been to a lot of events. I didn't talk about the events I've been to the last couple of weeks at the last board meeting. And there keeps, there's this one person that keeps showing up at all these events. And I'm like, who the heck is this lady that has all these events? And it's Mary Ellen. And I said, "Man, she is giving me a run for my money on attending events and out there in our community and our district." And I said, "You know what? I think, I don't think she'll ever be replaceable." But I said, "I got the new Dr. Margaret Hill over here next to me, who is everywhere." And I mean everywhere. So keep up the amazing work because I'll tell you, you're making me tired. Okay, I'm tired. And, but you're just like filled with energy. So great to see you there, and you're setting that bar very high for the rest of us. So appreciate you. AIC, Dr. Funches?
Right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning, good morning. Let's get our day going.
I'll try to pare this down and be very brief. I did want to just say thank you to the board for the time, care, and consideration that you put in the superintendent's search, it was evident. Thank you for your time and your effort there. I also want to thank the superintendent's office, Katrin Ballantag, and her staff for helping throughout this entire process. So job well done. With my comments tonight, I'll be very brief now. And I just wanted to welcome everyone to Black History Month. It is the month of February. Cultural heritage celebrations like this one are important for us all to acknowledge because we, as Americans, are made up of such rich diversity. And this month, we celebrate the richness of black history and the impact of black peoples on the America that we are today and our district, right? So with that being said, I have a few things that I wanted to point out. Margaret Hill Day, most of us came out to celebrate the first annual Dr. Margaret B. Hill It's All About the Children Day at the Young Visionaries Resource Center on January 21. What a beautiful tribute to Margaret Hill it was. It was a great outing. Kids were treated to a full day of fun. They had clothes, they had toys, they had food, and all those good things. Also, the Black Rose Awards banquet the other night at Cal State San Bernardino. President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, board members, Abiles Grande, Rios, me, Mrs. Applegate, Dr. Rodriguez, and Chief Polino at the 30th Annual Black Rose Awards banquet. That was a wonderful, we were so happy to see and witness the renaming of the Dr. Margaret Hill community's support to what will now be known as the Dr. Margaret Hill Black Rose Young Adults Inspiration Award. We loved being there, it was a great time, even though that one went a little bit long, too. I'll just say that. And then finally, Pacific High School ribbon cutting. On Thursday, February 9, Pacific High School and the entire district will make history with the ribbon cutting ceremony of the Transportation and Advanced Technology Center. This state-of-the-art diesel training facility is the first of its kind at a California high school and will serve dual enrollment students at Pacific High School as well as other SBCUSD high schools who are working towards certification to work commercial diesel trucks. That is excellent, right? That is a new opportunity for our young people. And then finally, I want to thank our counselors. It is National School Counseling Week. Thank you, counselors out there, for all that you do for our SBCUSD scholars to make sure that they get the supports they need to excel in school and in life. And those are my comments tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Funches. Let's keep this new day rolling. All right, 11.0 Action Items. 11.1 Approval Personnel Report Number 12, dated February 7, 2023, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations.
Present it.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. All right, motion carries. 11.2, and I'll need to read this one out. Establishment of Associated Student Body at Lincoln Elementary School. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves organization of Associated Student Body at Lincoln Elementary School effective fiscal year 2022-2023 in the San Bernardino United School District. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes Lincoln Elementary to establish a checking account in the name of the school's Associated Student Body.
Moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All right, let's go and vote. All right, motion carries. Ms. Cunningham, I hope that wasn't what you were waiting for. I saw that was prepared by you. And if you were waiting for that one, boy, you are a trooper. Thank you for hanging in there. Wow. And, you know, Lincoln Elementary School should say, "Thank you, Mr. Cunningham." All right, emergency resolution, San Gagonio High School boiler replacement.
Vote.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Absolutely not, let's vote. All right, motion carries. 11.4, 11.5, 11.6 were all pulled from the agenda. So we will move on to 12.0 Consent Items. 12.1 Approval Consent Items.
Vote.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Items to pull? I believe we did, oh, I'm sorry, I have one, but go ahead. Anybody have any items to pull? All right, I do need to pull 12.33. I will be abstaining from that one as it is a MOU with the San Diego County Superintendent Schools, not a paid MOU or contract, though. All right. Let's go ahead and vote, as amended.
Entertainer motion for 12.33?
Second.
I need you to move it.
Sorry.
It's moved.
Second.
Vote, please.
While you're voting, the consent item as a consent item agenda as amended was approved. And we'll move on to 12.33, as we just...
I'm sorry, I didn't get the two motions, I apologize.
It was a motion, I believe, by Mr. Vice President Tillman? No? All right, Ms. Husky. And seconded by Ms. Rosales Medina. There was no discussion and any vote.
I will, 13.1.
Okay. All righty. Okay, yeah, we did have to vote on that 12.33, that's what I was thinking. Again, I'm an abstention on that. As soon as that pops up, we're going to roll it up here, folks. 12.33. Actually, the first one was for consent as amended. 12.33 was me off of that abstaining. All right, we are now 13.1 Staff Overview Items Updated Request. Ms. Ontebetos? Oh, no, I'm not going to go to sleep tonight, so, Ms. Ontebetos.
And Ms. Ontavetos. Oh, no, I'm not going to go to sleep tonight. So Ms. Ontavetos.
Thank you, board. Here are the items that I captured for you this evening. It started during public comment. Dr. Scott Wyatt asked that we would provide an update on the fencing at Arroyo Valley High School. You also then asked Dr. Wyatt that we would consider providing the practice uniforms and warm-up suits for the soccer team. Then Dr. Scott Wyatt also asked about considering the repaying of families for the senior sitting fees. So those all came out of the public comment. Ms. Myra Sevales and also echoed with Dr. Wyatt, asked that we would look into events that have been underattended because students couldn't afford them. Ms. Myra Sevales asked that we would provide a description of the additional duties performed by the AICs. Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we would consider solutions to prevent students from smoking in the restrooms beginning at San Bernardino High School. And then that was followed by Dr. Scott Wyatt, who asked that we would research and consider applying for the Tobacco Use Prevention Education or the TUPE Grant to help reduce incidents of smoking in our schools. Ms. Myra Sevales asked that we would provide data about how the work with Dr. Doug Reeves has improved Ds and Fs in the district. Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we would ensure that there would be alternatives to allow students to graduate without A to G. And Ms. Dr. Van Kateson explained that there are alternatives to that. So I think that one was kind of answered during the program. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked that we would share the San Andreas video to the district's social media and website. And I want to thank David Chavez for already doing that. So you can check that off the list as well. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked that we would provide more details about how Avid is deployed throughout the district. Ms. Felicia Alexander asked that we would share data from San Andreas about how pathway students are succeeding and especially their matriculation into college after, after high school. Ms. Mary Ellen Abilis Grande asked that we would consider recognizing employees with 30 years of service to the district. Ms. Myra Sevales, and, and that one was also echoed with Mr. Danny Tillman and Dr. Wyatt. Ms. Myra Sevales asked that, and Ms. Miki Chikuski and Dr. Scott Wyatt asked that we would look into how we would be able to pay cash for events so that those without credit cards wouldn't be prohibited from attending. And then Ms. Miki Chikuski asked that we would add athletic games to the board calendars, especially when we're in CIF so that board members would know about them. And then Ms. Mary Ellen Abilis Grande asked that we would consider having students in the pathways take pictures so that that would allow families to get portraits for, for their seniors. So, okay. And I see that I'm missing one, so.
That was, no, that was, I made that request.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's good. No, but that's good. And I translated it.
Perfect. I just clicked the wrong button. So thank you very much. And those are all the.
Oh, I do want to add one. I'm sorry. With regards to, and I know they spoke about it briefly, but A, A, AP African-American Studies. And that way it's, that way they can give us information. I know I mentioned also Chicano Studies, you know, expanding that aspect.
Husky, did you have one also?
I have the Listen to Our Voices, the students from Muscley. Either, I mean, having them come present or putting their video on the website or something. But I think we should share since it involves a couple of our schools.
Okay, great. Thank you.
14.1, we want to adjourn. Dr. Wyatt, so we can adjourn. 14.1.
So moved, second. Good night, everyone.
It's been motioned and seconded to adjourn. Meeting is adjourned as always. Safe drive home and may God bless you all on our last night and our new day. It is a new day today in San Bernardino.